Meeting of July 27th to order. Commissioner Banksen, if you could give us a prayer, pledge, and the fact of the day, please, sir.
That's great. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this night to come together for the business of our city. We thank you for your blessing upon us as a people. May we work together for the betterment of all of our citizens. We thank you in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, on July 26th, 1775, the US postal system is established by the Second Continental Congress with Benjamin Franklin as its first postmaster general. Franklin put in place the foundation for many aspects of today's mail system. During early colonial times in the 1600s, mail deliveries from across the Atlantic were sporadic and could take many months to arrive. There were no post offices in the colonies, so mail was typically left at inns and taverns. In 1753, Benjamin Franklin, who had been postmaster of Philadelphia, became one of two joint postmasters general for the colonies. He made numerous improvements to the mail system, including setting up new, more efficient colonial routes and cutting delivery time in half between Philadelphia and New York by having the weekly mail wagon travel both day and night via relay teams. Franklin also debuted the first rate chart, which standardized delivery costs based on distance and weight.
All right. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? If so, look for a motion to approve. So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, agenda review. Edward?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we would like to pull, staff would like to pull Business Item Three.
Business Item Three.
Business Item Three?
So we're going to pull that.
Any reason for that? Will that be pushed to another date? Or?
We just, we thought we had a contract, and I just met with the gentleman from Brazil and got some things to work.
Yep, gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, so when you said pull Item Three from the consent agenda?
No, from the business item.
Oh, the business item? Because I was like, wait a minute, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that one.
All right. Susan, public comment.
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida, 32703. I was in front of the commission three weeks ago with some issues. Part of them involved your buildings. The update on that is some grass got mowed and some weeds got pulled, but that's about it. The other thing I want to cover before I get into the subject that I'm here about today is your minutes from the last meeting. Apparently, whatever I said after four minutes was cut off because I called for the mayor to be censored because of his questionable property pursuits and dealings with developers. That's nowhere in the minutes. It's a public meeting, it's public record, it should have been reflected. It's in the recording, so I'll call for it again. I request that the commission censor the mayor on all issues regarding property deals, zoning, permitting, and any kind of development processes be censored and removed from any kind of votes involved with it. So that's up there now. It's in the four minutes, it should be there. I'm here tonight to talk about safety. What I didn't get to tell you guys last time, because I got cut off at four minutes, is why I'm having a hard time cleaning up my yard. I'm having a hard time cleaning up my yard because I'm working with one arm. Why am I working with one arm? Because I tripped on one of your poorly maintained sidewalks, and I have to have reconstructive surgery on my shoulder. I'm 60 years old, they have to repair the labrum, the rotator cuff, and rebuild the tendon that goes to my arm muscles. I can't pick up anything heavier than a bottle of water. So I'm trying to clean my yard and do that, but I'm injured at the city's fault. Tripped on a sidewalk at the park where the sidewalks shouldn't be in disrepair, but they are. And I was going to talk about some other stuff tonight, but then I heard Mayor Nelson last week talk about getting grants for replacing concrete and asbestos pipe and galvanized pipe. So I want to make it quick. Concrete and asbestos pipe in the state of Florida, it doesn't have to be disturbed. The ground vibrates all the time. All it takes is seven particles, seven fibers per liter, to cause intestinal cancers and polyps. Galvanized pipe causes an increase in lead in your water pipe, causes mental defects and slow learning defects in children, and health problems in adults. We have miles of those pipes that I thought was replaced years ago. The city doesn't even have the tenacity to write a letter to the constituents and the consumer to say, hey, your water's coming through concrete and asbestos pipe. There may be health hazards associated with it. Take some action on your end. Everybody thinks about drinking water. I got news for you, the asbestos fibers, they go into your washing machine. When they're in your washing machine, they get into your clothes. When you put your clothes in the dryer, they get in the lint filter. When you clean the lint filter out, it's in the air and it gets in your nose. Mesothelioma, all sorts of cancers and problems. And yet, this city, not just for this admin, but for previous admins, has the audacity to not even notify the end user that the water they're getting may be contaminated with lead or asbestos. And the only way to tell is end-use testing, which means it has to be tested inside the house. From the meter to the house is my problem, but what's being delivered to the meter is your problem. And it's gone unchecked. I heard him say we went begging for grants to replace concrete and asbestos pipe. I don't know how much the grants are for, but the city's sitting on about, it's my understanding, well in excess of $50 million of emergency reserves. If hazardous pipes aren't an emergency, I don't know what the heck is. But let's leave the money sitting in the mayor's banker buddy's bank where it's earning hardly any interest for the city of Apopka taxpayers to do any projects. But we're not going to fix the water pipes delivering hazardous water to your house. Safety is not a subject in this city right now, as proof by the death of firefighter Duran. Safety needs to be foremost for the citizens, the employees, and everybody in this city. And somewhere, it's gotten lost. So ask yourself, integrity, morals and ethics, or complacency? What area do you fall into? My four minutes is up. I'll be back in two weeks and see you again with four more minutes. And I'm going to follow it up for you.
Next up, Susan.
You know we have the business item coming up.
Good evening. My name is Esmeralda Rebel Walker. I live in the Sheiler Oaks subdivision. Good evening, Mayor Nelson and Commissioners. I am grateful for the inlets installed on Sheiler Oaks subdivision. However, my neighbors and I are still experiencing severe flooding issues on Larkwood Drive and Prostfield Drive.
Can you wait till, this item's coming up on the agenda. Do you want to just wait till after that, if you want to comment after Richard Earp goes over the fix for Sheiler Oaks?
If you don't mind, I would like to continue.
Well, it would be better to do it after the presentation, because that's, we'll be happy to take you up.
But I would, she's already up. I would just let her give her public comment and...
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not going to shut you down.
Go. However, my neighbors and I are still experiencing severe flooding issues on Larkwood Drive and Prostfield Drive, and Saddleback Ridge Road and Mill Run Circle. The two previous floodings, the two previous floods were on May 21st, 2022, and July 13th, 2022. The July 13th was worse than May 21st. Then we even had to call 911 for the fire department to help us. I want to thank Commissioner Nesta, Commissioner Velazquez, and Commissioner Banksen for their responses to my emails. However, I have not heard from the city of Apopka employees of how they will help us to fix this continued flooding issues in the Sheiler Oaks subdivision. I am extremely concerned for our personal safety and the total loss of our homes due to continued flooding issues. I'm extremely worried because we are in the middle of hurricane season, and the flooding that we have experienced has been with afternoon showers, not during hurricane seasons. I have lived in the city of Apopka since 2004, and I have not experienced this. The first incident that we had was in July 2019. My neighbor Pamela Ripley's house got completely flooded. And so I'm extremely concerned, and I really need the city of Apopka to help us. I am grateful for the inlets that you guys have installed. However, that has not fixed the problem. I hope and pray that you are able to address our concerns this evening. Thank you so much, your time.
Thank you.
Ace Woodham?
We have about four minutes to start you that way around here, but... I'm not going to go and detail...
Name an address for the record, please.
Ace Woodham, Guy Woodham Jr., 47 East Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida, 32703. I've been a resident in this town for 66 years. My family's been here since 19, I'm sorry, 1898. Very disappointed in our direction our city is headed. Very disappointed. I've been with the Apopka Fire Department as a juvenile, back as a youth, back since I was 12 years old. Roy Gillum, Milton Hill, about raised me over there. I did everything from painting apparatus equipment inside the beds and old trucks, to help wash them hose, to putting no parking out on the apparatus apron. And it was as a family back then. Then the fire department came full-time besides just Chief Gillum and Milton Hill. They hired on Richard Anderson, Tommy Morgan, Roy Stanley, and let's go on, Bubba A.C. Clark. Those guys were my big brothers. They directed me and showed me what brotherhood and family was about. That's why the Apopka firefighters have always been built. They were proud of the community that they served. Firefighters from all over the state came here because they were proud of this fire department. They were proud of the training, the direction it was going. You cannot ask for a better bunch of guys and girls that are serving us right now at a young age of 23, 24, and 25. And it's very obvious they put their life on the line to protect us. And we failed. We failed as a group, we failed as a city. We've always, ever since the day Milton Hill was here, we've had a training officer. Our firefighters trained, they cross-trained between the stations, after there was more than one station. So that all firefighters had the same opportunity to learn how to pump from engine three or engine four, or work a tower truck. They knew if they had to pull in someone, everybody was on the same page about safety and response. Their goal was the same. Go home the next day and save our citizens and protect our citizens. And we are not doing that. Mayor Nelson, we've been friends forever, I'm going to say this. You appointed a fire chief that's a very good firefighter. You appointed him to run a department that's highly respected at the time across the state. He said, and us watched the same other night, our chief says, oh, I don't know about a training officer. That was his position. And he don't know about it? That really worries me. He said he's got a safety crew. The safety people that he's talking about is someone that looks at incidents and goes back and say, how can we make it better so it don't happen again? They don't train. We've always had a single officer do all the cross-training. And I'm telling you, y'all better get seriously thinking about putting, improvise that person again, implementing them. Because we're going the wrong direction as far as safety in this community. And I'm talking about all first responders, PD, they got these things too. And that's why Officer Miller's here to get his budget right. But let me tell you, also, we got firefighters inspecting buildings that are not licensed fire inspectors. That's against the law. They're filling out fire inspection reports. We got one fire inspector for this whole city. We're putting up a million square foot of commercial buildings a month? How can we keep up with that? I know my time's running out, I see you looking at it. But I'm like Dennis New, I'll be back next week and I'll keep filling you in. But if y'all have any questions, please feel more than free to call me. I put my number on Facebook, I write it and put it out on the street sign out here for you. But these are some issues we need to address, and I mean soon. Because our administration at FD is failing us.
Thank you.
That it? Okay. Next up, millage rate. Nope. We'll get to you on the...
We need to do the consent agenda first, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, got consent items. Anybody have, anybody want to pull the consent, any of the consent items?
No, just wanted to note, we bought a new canine.
Yeah, oof, what a mess. Yeah. So not look for motion to approve the consent, the five consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, millage rate. Edward?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I guess let me start by saying first, you probably feel a little different from my voice. It's come through a lot. It's a little emotional right now, but I'm going to get through this. I want to thank you all for your support, your prayers, your staff, for your report, your prayers, and the citizens of Apopka. I have a long way ahead me, but I'm going to get there. So bear with me this evening. If you don't understand something I'm saying or whatever, I'm sorry, please stop me. I want to make sure you have all the information as clear as possible. But I wanted to say that first and foremost, that I'm glad to be back. It was a rough road, and thank God for prayer.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, Ed, and we will continue to keep you in prayer so that this road that you have ahead of you, we understand it's long, but you have shown us your courage and your determination. And I give you credit for even being here tonight. So welcome back, Ed.
Thank you. So the first, I think what I want to do first is, I'm going to go through the general fund first. That's our major fund. Tonight, what we have to do is set the millage rate. That's all you have to do tonight. Is set the millage rate, and you have to set two public hearings. Your tentative public hearing and your final public hearing. Those will be in September, and those will be the date where you actually adopt the final millage rate and the final budget for FY '23. So I'm going to go through the major funds so I can show you they're all balanced, which is important. Are we done at this point? No, we can still add, and we still will be, because the budget is a moving target until we get to September. Things can change from salaries, benefits, but the budget is currently built for those small kinds of changes. So at the end of the budget, the presentation, I will share with you the millage rate options you have. Keep in mind, when you set the millage rate, you can go down, but it's hard to go up. It's a lot more difficult to go up. So whatever you set tonight, that's pretty much your cap. And we will go over that when we get through the budget. I do want you to know that the budget is balanced at the current millage rate. As we move through, I'll show you some of those items of where we are and where, how we got to where we are. So from the general fund perspective, you can see that the general fund is balanced. Revenues and expenses are balanced at a little more than $64 million. That is almost 10% more than the prior year, almost $6 million more just in spending that you have for '23 than you had in '22. So kind of where does the money go? From a function standpoint, you can see public safety gets almost 61%. That's up 1% from last year. Last year, it was close to 60. So as you can see, more of the budget is going towards public safety this year than went in previous years. Public services has got about 5%. Parks and Rec is almost 12%. Transfers is $2 million. General Government is 9 or 14 and a half percent, and Community Development is about 5%. So that's where your dollars are going from your general fund monies. From expense standpoint, personnel makes up almost 70%. 67% of the budget is personnel. 23, almost 24% is operating expenses, and capital outlay is about 6.6 or 7%. Debt service is about 1.6, and transfers are about 1.6, or about a million each for those. I want to point out, I'm not going to go through every single revenue line, but I want to go through the ones that have changed, or the significant ones where the major increases have happened, or what will happen in '23 or projected to happen. If you look here at your property tax, your property tax is up 21 and a half percent. A big increase, one of the biggest increases we've ever had in property taxes. Almost $3.6 million. So big, big property tax, increase in property tax revenues due to growth. And of course, you know, property can go up 3% on home state properties. So one of the biggest ones we've ever had. Moving down, I wanted to show you sales tax. Well, let me go up and go to communication services tax. You can see communication services tax is up $250,000, or 16%. That's a revenue we get through the state, that comes through the state. So the next one, if you go down to state revenue sharing, and you go down to local half cent sales tax, both of those numbers make up their sales tax dollars. So those are the sales tax dollars that are generated, a projection that comes from the state that says this is what they believe they will collect for us next year. And those two numbers together represent $927,000, almost a million dollars in increase in sales tax, or about 8.6%. I want, right here, let me stop real quick and tell you, keep in mind, this number is changing every day. They make projections, this is the latest we have. I've already received one adjustment that reduced by 50,000. It's not a big number, but I just want you to know, as we move through this process, when we get to September, it could go down, doesn't seem to be going up. It seems to be they've made a projection, they're looking out in the forecast, and they think they may make some more adjustments. I hope not, I hope this is where we are, but as we move through, before we get to September, we'll be able to make those adjustments.
So you did see 50,000% down?
Sorry, $50,000 down. Yeah. But keep in mind, and we keep saying this, that's why you have reserves. So if we build this budget, and they come back and the state says, we're going to lose $300,000. That's where we can use our reserves to keep our budget balanced where it is, if we have to. That's why we have that as well.
Do we have like an average variance that we build into this per year? I mean, because I feel like we could average that out over the last five to 10 years and say, let's build that variance in. Does it usually go down a lot like that?
No, because it does this.
They just, they give you their best guess, and that's the money, that's what you put into the budget, what they give you.
Right. And they encourage us not to do less than what they give us. I mean, more than what they give us. You can do less if you want to, but they encourage you, hey, this is a projection. You need to use this number, because this is the number we believe we're going to be sending to you. Moving down to zoning fees. You can see zoning fees are $55,000 last year and $200,000 this year. This is the one Jim was talking about. He's getting ready to bring you some changes to the planning and zoning fees, the user fees. So we're going to have, we will have a projection of increased revenues because those fees haven't been increased in a long time. So he's going to bring you those as well. Let me go back, I'm sorry, let me go back up to business tax. So you can see business tax, $195,000 last year, and I have $300,000 this year. We have a projected increase here because we are looking to piggyback off of a contract in order to have someone review all of our business tax and all of our businesses within our city limits to make sure we're capturing everybody. We want to make sure it's fairing that we have everybody, every business is paying their business tax, and we don't have anybody that we're missing. We believe, based on early conversations we've had, that we probably have $100,000 or $150,000 more in revenue here of businesses that we're not capturing.
It's just kind of like we had with the water company. We're just, you know, there's, we got a company that somehow they got the AI to figure out if there's people that are incorporated in Apopka that aren't paying their business tax. So we figure like, this is a great way for us to collect some additional revenue that's just due us. It's not, it's not new taxes, it's just collecting more of the revenue that we are owed. So we're excited about this new contract.
So moving down to, let me go to ambulance fees.
Ed, do we, I'm sorry, do we have this here?
Yeah, it's in your packet. If you expand your revenue, if you hit your revenues, it will expand and give you the detail.
Wait a minute.
This is also online for the public. The public can see everybody just write down to the detail.
Were you saying, are you talking, going back to the budget workshop packet?
Yeah, it's a good packet.
Oh, you have to go back to the workshop packet?
No, if you go, yes, the workshop packet, where it says all funds or budget overview.
Budget overview.
If it could there.
Okay, let me see that, wait a minute. I'm, okay, the budget workshop packet?
Yes, go back to the packet and go to the third day.
Where do you have, like, the budget where we were playing around with? Oh, yeah, right there. And we're going to go to general government. We're not doing general, what are we?
Yeah, we're doing general fund.
Well, it's a budget.
Yeah, the last one, the last tab.
Yep.
Okay.
That's what he's going over, right?
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, I should have said we should open, you have to have you open that.
I was kind of looking for it in...
In that packet, but it's probably that one.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry I interrupted you, but now I...
That's okay.
Okay.
So you'll see ambulance fees. We talked about, if we recall in the fire department workshop, they talked about the additional revenue from Medicaid that we can get because we're part of that program now with our new ambulance billing process and everything. They have projected $150,000 in ambulance fee revenues. So that's a new number, that additional revenue that we will get, or new revenue that we will get.
That's because we, you know, we made that change over to...
Change health.
Change health. We're able to bring in additional revenue. Any B that didn't have any way to collect that. So that's a, it's just a windfall for us.
The next number that, or significant revenue is very important to highlight, is the other public safety charge is fire. If you see $10,000, the year before it's to $300,000. Those are the fees you recently approved for fire inspections. So this is a new revenue based on those fire inspection fees that you improved that we believe are, that we will collect. These numbers are conservative numbers, it's our first year out of the box, so we want to make sure that we have good numbers, good projections for the future. Let me see, moving down to, most of the other revenues are pretty much pretty even, pretty flat. One of the other ones is pretty big, I think significant, is reserves, it's important to highlight. We're using about $1.4 million of the reserves to balance this budget. That's about what we used last year. That's about what we used last year as well. Keep in mind that even with this, using this one point four million of reserves, we still are maintaining a twenty-five percent reserve balance in the general fund. So you'll still be at that level, even with this reserve number.
So we're using savings to balance our budget?
Yes, we use, well, you're using reserves that, it's not really, it's not savings, it's a reserve, it's like a savings account. You're right, we look at it that way, but reserves are established for this purpose, to help balance the budget, for emergency purposes, and things of that nature. Like I said earlier, if the state comes back, the state could come back in the middle of the year and say, that ten million dollar I gave, number I gave you is going to be nine million. And we'd have to make that difference up. That's why we have reserves to be able to help with that as well.
Because two thousand and twenty, we were down right at three million dollars.
Right at three million dollars.
And so had, had we not had reserves to cover those, those shortfalls in, in sales tax.
Right, that could happen in the middle of the year. It could have, the state could say, I'm making a big adjustment based on the economy, you're going to get a million dollars less. We can go to reserves and continue to operate our budget.
There's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease in recreation activity fees. Is there a reason why such a drop?
Yeah, I think what, I think the reason what you have there, and Bradley is going to come back, who'll be able to come back to you and give you a overview of our recreation department with, with our programs, camp, new camp programs or whatever. We had, it was our first year, so we weren't sure about exactly how those programs would fall out and how, how the revenues would fall. But keep in mind, when he comes back to show you that, the expenses are offset almost very similar. So we didn't collect the revenues from those programs, but we also didn't expend the money for some of those programs. But he's, once he gets a year, a year of camp of re-while in, then we can come back and show you that picture. But we're still, camp's still finishing up out there, so let's do it, bring those numbers. So with that, I'm going to move down, go through the highlights. So I wanted to go through all the major highlights in this budget. You heard from all the departments, so some of the stuff you see here are going to be very similar to the workshops. These are putting everything together to her at the workshops, putting it all together to fund, to show you how we're funding that in the general fund. I will tell you that everything you heard the workshops that they presented is in this budget. Nothing has been eliminated from what they presented, from whether it be staff, capital, operating, it's all in this number. So from the expenditure side, I'll start with the expenditure side. The merit pay, up to six percent merit pay is still included in this budget, same as it was last year. So that's in here. The longevity pay we talked about, where we were trying to help the employee with, because of inflation, we're trying to figure out, where can we help? How can we give the employee a little more? How can we help them in these tough times? They can still get up to their six percent. And I will tell you, we've reached out to other jurisdictions to find out where they are, and most of them are around four or five, and a couple are close to six. Some are still trying to decide where they are. But we reached out to see how we were in comparison to everybody else, and we were the top. Up to six percent was, was the max that people were giving. So we're, we are in line with some of those places. So, and as they build their budgets, we'll continue to watch that, to kind of see what our neighbors are doing. But I think we're, we're most, everybody's going to be. So longevity pay, we talked about that earlier in the workshop, but we doubled the longevity pay as a way to kind of help our employees of some kind of a way to give them back, give a little more back to them. And the good thing about this is, it comes in November. We usually give it before Thanksgiving, so the employee has it during the holiday season as well. So this is one way we felt, how can we give back a little bit more to the employee? Keep in mind, it's based on longevity, so those employees that have been with us longer will get more than those who have been with us for a small period of time. But it does give them a little extra longevity check.
Wasn't it a hundred and eighty thousand, Edward? What was the, the number for the, for doubling the?
Yeah, it was about a hundred and eighty.
Okay, a hundred and eighty thousand.
Hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Right. Keep in mind, that's one time for this year, and the next year it will go back to where it was unless we decide to do something else or keep it. So, but that was one of the areas, it's kind of hard to find a place to write, how can we help the employee? How can we give a little more? And so this was one of those areas where we can actually give a little more money back to them. The police department competitive pay adjustments that you heard from the police department's presentation, all of those increases across all of those employees and those functions are included in this budget number. They are funded. So we have seventeen new positions in the general fund. I'll go through each one of them real quick. I know you've already heard these departments say them, but I wanted to kind of give you those. You have two crossing guards, new crossing guard positions. And we increased the crossing guards from, I think they were thirteen or fourteen to fifteen dollars an hour, hoping we can, you know, become more competitive and help. Commissioner Velazquez, you talked about the part-time seasonal people. We have a little bit of extra funding in here to be able to help with those. You know, if we have some issues or whatever, and we want to be able to help incentivize some of those, because sometimes it can be hard to hire seasonal. We've seen that with some of our camp counselors, it's been difficult to hire camp coun- counselors. So we've put some additional funding to try to help with those as well. We have put in additional funding with our park rangers to be able to bring them up to fifteen dollars an hour. And we have a few positions that are right on the cusp of fifteen dollars an hour. We're going to adjust all of them and bring them to fifteen, since that is going to be the minimum wage number in twenty-five that we have to be at. So we're going to go ahead and, and get there now, get there today. So those are in here as well.
So when we had a workshop, though, an hour and a half ago, that wasn't budgeted?
No, they, well, what the department can tell you is, we budget for a certain number of people in a dollar amount. That dollar amount, we've calculated enough in that dollar amount to be able to give those, those hourly wages. It's not a big amount because those.
Right.
But we've budgeted enough in there. We always budget a little, in case we want to add another person or whatever, we have issues. So we, but we have funding in there to take care of that. The same with the salaries, the people that are, if we have somebody making fourteen dollars and fifty cents an hour, we, there's enough funding to bring them to fifteen dollars an hour.
So this fiscal year, nobody will be below fifteen dollars an hour?
The only people that will be below fifteen dollars an hour are your park, your facilities people, your current, and your camp counselors. But what I'm saying is, we have funding in here to be able to do that. And so when Bradley goes through and works with his program or whatever, he'll have that funding to be able to do that.
Okay.
You have six new firefighters that are funded in this budget. You have a web content and social media analyst. You have a GIS coordinator, two multi-code inspectors. You have a parks worker, if you recall, they talked about bringing the parks worker on for beautification, help keep the city, city trash cleaned up. A financial analyst, accountant one, and accountant clerk, you have those positions funded. An HR specialist, also included in the budget. So there are your seventeen positions that you have. And as you can see, most, the biggest number of positions we have are in fire. We're putting, you know, six of those numbers into fire department. Health insurance, we saw a ten percent increase in our health insurance premium. When we started out, it was about, about thirteen. So we've been able to get that down to ten, which is pretty good when you look across the nation. Ten percent is not, not as bad as it could be. So a ten percent insurance, health insurance increase. If you look in the training budgets across all departments, training dollars are up ninety-one percent. So we have put more money in training, and this is all the departments. But if you recall, the police department, fire department increased their training budget significantly in this current budget that you have. So there's, there's more dollars in there. For the paramedic pay they have in, and then also the police was talking about sponsoring somebody from the academy, those dollars are in here. The commissioners discretionary accounts, if you recall, they were, I told you earlier in the workshop, we increased those from three thousand to ten thousand so that you would have more dollars to help those nonprofits and those organizations that, that you wish to help. Annual debt reduction, so one of the good things about this budget is, we reduced the annual debt payment by one point two million because we paid off a couple loans. So that allowed that one point two to be spent in other places within the budget. Keep in mind, we're also getting ready to come back to you with the public safety complex that will require a debt service payment. So it's really good that we're getting things lined up, getting the debt off the books, so we can add another piece of debt. And that will be a significant debt, so it's important that we get these other debts off, which we are in good shape. I've been doing that, so that's a good thing.
And what's the estimate of that complex when we get it finished?
Well, as you heard, the number's about fifty-three million dollars.
Right.
We're hoping that, you know, we still have to do design. We'll see about four, four and a half million dollars just to do design. So we have to do design, hopefully by the time we get design done, then the market will be hopefully supply chain, things will be a little bit better, and maybe it won't be a fifty-three. Maybe it'll be forty-five. But keep in mind, when we originally wanted to do it, we were looking at thirty-five. So now we're at fifty.
Yeah, back in twenty sixteen when I started, it was, we were talking twenty-ish.
Right.
So the cost of.
But hopefully, hopefully we'll, you know, we'll get some better deals, hopefully. Once we get to the design, if you remember, the design, as you said, takes ten to twelve months to design it. So that gives us some time to, hopefully, when it gets to construction phase. Also, we'll be bringing back the debt presentation to you to issue the debt for the building. So hopefully, you know, timing will be just right for us too, that's what we're hoping. With interest rates, it will be a really good interest rate on that debt. And let me point out here where it's very important. When you issue a bond like we're going to issue here, one of the people, one of the places they look at is reserves. If your reserve number is very, very healthy, you get a better rate. So it's just, I do, it's important just to keep that in mind too. Everything we have, all the factors that we have are perfectly lined up, and you'll hear that from your financial analyst, a financial advisor. We're in good shape to be able to issue that size debt. That's a big debt. It's one, other than the sewer plant, it's the second biggest debt we've ever issued.
And we plan, you know, we're going to add the, the parks and rec, some debt there as well. So, you know, we've paid off, we'll pay off, I think it's middle of next, is it this year, next year?
Nobody paid it off this year.
This year, this year it'll be paid off, you know, and that was about a six hundred and, I think, six hundred and forty thousand dollar debt payment for, for, you know, for the, the whole park property. So what we thought is, we roll whatever that number would be, looking like probably eight million dollars. We could borrow eight million to make major improvements at Northwest and still have the same payment going forward. So that's kind of the, the thought process.
So some of the major capital items that you heard from the departments, there are twenty new vehicles between all the departments you heard, police, fire. We have twenty new vehicles. We have a fire engine, two ambulances, the ADA playground, our match is in there, it's funded. You have the VFW video audio system is budgeted. Katelyn Nelson gazebo replacement or expansion, that's in there. And then the restrooms and racquetball roof, the roof at Katelyn Nelson and their bathroom needs replacing. That's a significant roof that we have replacement in here, and so that's also included in this budget. So on the revenue side, you have the current millage rate is four point one eight seven six. That's where we're balanced currently today in this budget. The taxable value was nine hundred and seventeen million dollars, it was a tax value increase in the state of Apopka for FY twenty-three or twenty-one point eight percent. It's one of the biggest ones we've ever had, so keep that in mind. So we went over these revenues, but I will go over them real quick again. Three point six million dollars or twenty-one point eight percent increase in property tax revenues. Nine hundred and twenty-seven or eight point six percent in sales tax revenues. Two hundred and fifty in communication services tax revenues. Two hundred and ninety in fire inspection fees increased based on the fees we just adopted. A hundred and fifty in ambulance fees for Medicaid. Hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase in planning and zoning fees that we, we're going to bring you those. A hundred and five in business tax revenues, we talked about that earlier. And then we're using one point four of the reserves to balance the budget. So with that being said, the budget, the, the general fund budget is up ten percent, and it's balanced at sixty-four, a little over sixty-four point two million dollars. So you asked about millage rate. It's a millage rate, the millage rate, four point one, four point one eight seven six. That's where it currently sits today. So it's not being lowered, it hasn't been increased. Should the council decide to increase it? These are, these are some of the options if you decide to do that. I, I would keep in mind, if you're going to increase the millage rate, you need to do it for something of significant importance, something big, something significant. Because when I say that, if you, if we have some small tweaks that we want to make to the budget, there's room to make those. Is there room to make a half a million or a million dollar adjustment? You know, probably not without going deeper into reserves. But if there's some small adjustments that you see in this budget, there's room for, to make some of those smaller adjustments. Tonight, what you have to do tonight, like I said, you have to set the millage rate. Keep in mind, wherever you set it, you can go down in September. You can go up, but it's difficult. It takes a big, it's a big process, it's a lot of work. So it's better to set it high if that's where you're going, or that's what you wish, and we can come down. Or you can set currently where we have it balanced at four point one eight seven six. But we have to notify the property preserver by Friday, this Friday, of where that millage rate will be. And we also have to set the public hearing dates. And right now, just what, what we are recommending to set those dates are September, Wednesday, September the seventh at five fifteen here in the city council chambers. That will be your tentative budget hearing. And then you have to do a final or a second budget hearing, and we're proposing to do that on Wednesday, September the fourteenth at six o'clock.
Right on cue.
So, so, but, so, Mayor, what I'd like to do is, I know general fund is what, what we have to do tonight, and you've seen all that. And I'm, I'm here and staff's here to answer questions, and we can do that. But I'd like to go quickly through the other funds real fast, there's only a few of them, just to show you their balance and what the department's presenting to you are including in those budgets. These budgets will not be adopted until September, but I wanted to show you so you can see the other, what the other funds have as well. So I'm just going to hit the highlights for these for you. So you can see in the streets budget, from your workshops, it's increased by nine percent overall, or balanced at six point one million dollars. You have one point eight in street resurfacing, and according to our street assessment plan, remember you, you had that, that resurfacing plan? And they talked about a good number, it's one point eight million every year in the fund. So we're using a million dollars from the CARES Act or the, the recovery funds. And unfortunately, we have those dollars, which is a great thing, but this fund, property, gas tax doesn't generate that much money. And if you recall, we also have our streetlights in here, and you have recently approved a streetlight assessment, a study to do a streetlight assessment. And that will be coming back to you to look at setting a streetlight assessment fund. But when, if, if, if we get to that point and the council, you know, approves that assessment, a streetlight assessment, that will free up dollars in this fund to be able to do resurfacing going forward. Because we can't rely on the care, on the, on the recovery money forever. It's, it's, you know, we, we don't have much of that left. And we're going to be bringing that back to you too, to show you where we've spent all that money. And it will include all these items as well, so you can see how that money's been, where that money's been spent. New sidewalks of a hundred thousand. Keep in mind, you haven't seen the impact fee funds, but you'll see those in September. There's also big dollars in the impact fee fund for new sidewalks. This is for new sidewalks where we find from our side of the, of the street assessment. That is for new sidewalks for new construction of new roads and new areas. There's a truck, a Ford F five fifty that they're funding in this one. There's a speed hunt program of fifty thousand dollars. I, and I recall Pam telling you we were going to put extra up, we're going to put seventy-five thousand in there this year. We are making that adjustment, we have the money to do it, we have enough. So we are going to increase that to seventy-five because we've had more interest in that program. So when you see this in September, it will have additional twenty. So when you see this in September, it will have additional twenty-five thousand. Because Pam, you directed Pam, you wanted her to put more money in that program. So we're going to put another twenty-five thousand in that program. Um, the asphalt roller, you heard them talk about that, the back foot motor replacement, that was talked about as well. So revenue highlights, not a whole lot in this fund because it doesn't generate much. Um, we transferred over a million dollars from the general fund now to help it, and we're continuing to transfer that. Um, we have a million coming from the rescue funds, like I talked about. And then your gas tax went up a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So that's that fund. And that fund is balanced too. All of these funds are balanced, so everything's balanced. Stormwater fund, if you recall, the stormwater fund, there's not, not a significant amount of highlights in here, but it's balanced at four percent or one point one million dollars. And as Richard, Richard told you in his meetings, um, the, the master plan is being updated and the inventory study is being done, so that we can bring that back to you. So next year, we'll have good information of all capital needs, all the expansion needs to be able to, um, set that stormwater rate. Utility operations fund. This fund is up eight percent or a little over twenty-eight million dollars. Some of the expenditures that you heard from those departments are some big, significant capital projects. And, um, the recreation complex reclaim, water storage pond, you heard, there was a big amount. Some of the regional wells, that they talked about deepening those wells. Water main replacements, lift station renewal replacements. Um, the onsite distribution wastewater system, the dollars that were put in there if we received a grant, the grant money and we want to use a match, work with those grant money, we have our, our match. And then there are four new vehicles that they talked about in those departments that are funded as well. From a revenue side, the four hundred thousand dollars that Mayor spoke about earlier, about the additional money that was coming in from the, um, from having the, we have no water, from the water, um, office of America. That four hundred thousand is, is included in this budget as well. And then your rate increase from the study. If you recall, they came and brought you the, the rate study that showed the increase in rates. Um, they are bringing that back on August the seventeenth. You will be seeing that, and so you will be able, that will be where you will adopt those rates for, um, utility services for, to begin in fiscal year twenty-three. They are included in this budget. And the last one I want to go over, because the last budget, the significant budget, is the sanitation budget. You heard from the departments on that. There's a twenty-one percent increase, um, or just over seven million dollars. Um, his biggest expenditure was fuel, was a big for him. And then he had, if you remember, he had the pup truck, that he was doing a new program with the small, being able to get into those tight areas. That is included in this budget as well. He also had the position he hired for that service or that truck. Um, he had, and you can see the, the major items there, he had, um, a call truck, the pup truck, two garbage trucks where we're doing an advanced payment. He spoke about we're going to put a deposit down because it takes twelve to fourteen months or longer to build those trucks. And so we want to make sure we start building those trucks, so he'll have them for twenty-four. Um, the revenue highlight, also, we're going to be bringing to that in the August meeting. Um, we're requesting a six percent increase in the sanitation rates because of the increase in, in, in fuel and increase in garbage. The hauling rates, he showed you how they were going up with one tally. So we're doing that, bringing that to you to be able to keep up. We have to be able to keep this revenue, we have to keep up with our expenditures. Also, he mentioned a little bit about the replacement trucks. Three replacement trucks are about one point two, one point three million dollars. We're going to get some back from insurance, we, we save some from insurance. The trucks, when we sell them, the two that you bought, we were going to use them and sell them to get CNG trucks. We will sell those trucks when these trucks are in, and we will take those dollars and apply it to, to one of these trucks. But what we're going to do is bring you some of that rescue money that we have and use a million dollars of that rescue money to help replace these garbage trucks. So I think that's good use of that money, because it's a big capital item that we would have to get from, from somewhere else, from the sanitation rates or somewhere else. So I think that's good use of those dollars as well.
Will that get us to a place where we have just the consistent replacement now?
Yeah, he had, and he did. He was, he was, we were in great shape.
And we lost those two, but basically that will keep us there, so.
Yeah, he's, he, this will keep us, the six percent is what helps keep us on track.
But wouldn't it be wise to keep the two trucks we did purchase? Because, um, the, it, the landscape is going to get larger for picking up garbage. So how many trucks do we have for what we have right now in residence, uh, residential communities? But by the time we get the new trucks, we're probably going to have one or two or three more new developments. So that's a whole new pickup for the, for sanitation.
Right.
How are we doing?
There's only that guy speaks of that because he can tell you better about those trucks. How the CNG trucks save us so much more money than keeping them.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, so we're, we're covered right now. We've got, with the trucks we brought in, we're just going to replace those with CNG. Partly because we've committed to CNG and also partly because over the life of that truck, it's like, it's a million, almost a million and a half dollars in fuel savings, so, so there's some financial benefit. But we'll continue to add trucks, new trucks to, to the plan, you know. We've got those in the five-year plan to cover the current. And then next year, we figure in the growth and add, when it's time, we add new trucks and then another operating form, so. But we're covered, we're covered good.
I was going to say, during the workshop, you said you had a plan until twenty twenty-three, or twenty thirty-three?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, I was about to say. I'm counting all your clocks now, I'm getting everybody that's head of department, what's your clock, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're good there.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I will go back to the general fund, because again, we, that is, this is the action you have to take tonight is based on a millage rate, um, from the general fund. But we're here answering questions you have. Staff is here, if you have any questions for them. Um, but like I said, tonight, we have to set the millage rate, and we have to set the public hearing dates. That's the requirement for your team.
Okay, any questions for Edward on the budget?
Well, um, you know, that we listened through the workshops, and there are still some needs that were presented and obviously have not been mentioned. And, and of course, I'm going to go back to the Apopka Fire Department. Um, we're talking about a compliance officer, a fire inspector, something that's very important to them, which is the health and safety officer.
Training.
The training officer, so I, I mean, those are positions that don't exist and should exist.
Uh, chief, why don't you come on down and try to answer those?
Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, Sean Wolf, I'm Fire Chief. Wanted to answer your question directly, of course, but then get into some of the, some of the things that were discussed the other night as well. I think on a personal level, right now, I want everyone to kind of understand we're dealing with a lot. We're dealing with the loss of one of our family members. And it's something that's been kind of stated that I'm not taking that serious or I don't care. I started in the fire service at twenty-one years old, for Eatonville Fire Department. I was lucky enough to get hired here in two thousand and two at twenty-two years old. I think there's a lot of opportunities throughout someone's career. I started as a firefighter EMT. I've worked, I've kicked tires and fought fires, as they say. I've done a lot of different things. And something of this magnitude, it's going to change a lot of things. And I kind of mentioned that the other night, and I was caught off guard by some of the things that were mentioned. And I got to thinking about a lot of that stuff. And I thought, I want to talk to my firemen tonight and my firewomen tonight too as well. But cultural change does not happen overnight, I understand that. We want to make sure that we're starting with some of those changing behaviors, starting to make those norms. Uh, and then it becomes culture. The incident currently right now is still under investigation with the state fire marshal. We're finishing interviews as we speak even this week. With law that different stuff and the norm with an incident, accident, event like that, is that the safety committee meetings, we're not even allowed to discuss even a simple wreck if it's still under investigation. Part of this with dealing with, with the investigation by the state fire marshal's office, which we've been working with since day one, it's still in process, includes in complacency inspection by the state fires marshal's office, which looks at all of our operations. So that's something I'm harnessing, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. I want that to happen, I want to take a look at our entire processes, everything. Um, a holistic view of our department by a third party. On top of that, I've been soliciting for a third-party safety consultant to come to our department to look, another third-party look at our things. That's coming. I think part of that, also a third-party, is going to help our safety committee, because there's a newly established one we just did yesterday, to get that education, to educate them to do the right things. And eventually a post, a post-incident critique will happen, I promise you. Um, this also has to happen once the investigation is complete. I want this investigation to go thoroughly because Austin deserves it. He deserves a due regard given to an complete and accurate investigation. Once that is complete, you also have to understand that we buried him Saturday. We are still dealing with a lot of emotions, a lot of different things with our fire department. We have a lot of healing to do. We still have a lot of people dealing with emotional stress, shock. And some have even come to shift and had to leave this week. It's real. Don't think it's not, we're not hurting, and don't think that I'm not thinking about that kind of thing. Because I'm having to balance our family's feelings and also us moving forward at the same time. So it hurts when I'm accused of not caring or not wanting to move us forward, because that is absolutely false. I care about this department, I care about our people. Even the day of, we had multiple investigations going on with the police department, state fire marshal's office. Had people come up to me, chief, why do they keep asking us the same questions? So I'm trying to balance many different things at the same time. It's been a warwind. It is going to take time, I promise, but we're going to get there. The change is going to happen, and most policies and procedures improvements unfortunately happen because of disasters. Accusations were mentioned about us not responding to an emergency safety meeting. I assure you, that very night, I called all three of my chiefs and said, did anyone get an email regarding an emergency meeting? None. The only thing was our division chief of life safety received a correspondence asking because of vacancy if a person can be appointed to that position. He was on a cruise at the time. And another email followed up with a follow-up email saying with that same request. But nothing was about an emergency request. The letter, I guess, that was out, the first time I saw that was on social media. Nothing was ever presented to me as far as some of these wishes. I, I have the most open-door policy out there. If you hear something, see something, please come to me. I want this improvement to happen, I want these things to be brought to my attention. Even following up on the dryer exhaust vent from the other night that was mentioned. I went to station two that very next morning, looked at the vent, and was advised by Chief Bowman again, who handles our facilities, that the issue was sent in and that even a lieutenant requested weeks ago a, another dryer vent. And I was placed back on that, and it was handled. When we arrived Tuesday morning, it was in position. I even asked him about the safety inspections, quarterly safety inspections that are supposed to be taking place at our department. And this morning, he was, I was provided with the last list of, that took place in five thirteen of two thousand and two of those inspections. And a year, five years' worth of those safeties inspections as well. So it's not something we're ignoring. This inspection actually includes the lingerie of the stations as well. Some of the other things of, is obviously being talked about, the QA position. This year's been tough, we've been dealing with a lot, including a stroke from one of our firefighters' wives. I remember talking to the lieutenant at the time, not knowing what he was going to do or how he was going to handle the rest of his life. I immediately offered to him a possible forty-hour position filling that QA position. He's still not back to work, he's still trying to figure things out. So that is coming, but I also wanted to offer that to one of our own before we go outside. A lot of decisions, a lot of things happened behind the scenes that you guys aren't aware of sometimes, and I feel like I'm not even asked. Training position, we've been looking at something phenomenal with Orange County Public Schools, starting a recruit program with Orange County schools. Part of that was looking at an MOU that they were actually provide funding for a training person for us. I was thrilled. Some of that, I don't think I'm not thinking about these items. And also, recently, and that person was Lieutenant Knapp. Ask him, I was excited, now he's going to be a district chief, but months ago, hey, this is an opportunity, this is something we're interested in, yes, let's follow up on that. Where it's changed a little bit, where we might have to help team now because of schedules and things like that to work. They're vetting six of our people to be able to assist at this school. And at the same time, we'll be able to use those individuals for our department. The biggest thing I just want to emphasize is that we are moving forward. We have to. I am dedicated to bringing us in the right direction, keeping us going in the right direction. Because I too was raised in this department. And it means a lot, it means a lot to all of us. And I'm not just ignoring it, I'm just watching out and trying to balance a bunch of different things at once. So if you have any questions.
Any questions for chief?
Well, um, I, I just want to say this. I, I understand that you're moving forward to, I guess, institute some of these responsibilities. But what do you have right now? Right now, like tomorrow, is there a health and safety, is someone specifically doing health and safety?
We have the life safety chief.
Yeah.
Bowman.
Bowman.
Mm-hmm.
So you, I, I really sympathize with you because I realize that at your, uh, level as a chief, sometimes you don't see what's going on around you. But the other night, when, the first night of the workshop, you had all of them sitting here. And they were all very distraught, they were angry, they were sad, and you left. You didn't get to hear them, we did. And that is, I think, is part of why they felt maybe that you're saying that you did not care. It really was, they sat here through the whole workshop, and it was very important for them for us to hear their pain, to hear what they felt was missing. And so that is what we're bringing to you today. And I understand what you're saying, that you are moving forward following this tragedy, because it's a tragedy. But what they want is the security that as of, it's not that we're working toward it, but that we're creating it right now for them, that's safety. That they feel that tomorrow, when they show up to work, that they have these things in place. Do we have that? That's what I'm asking. Is that part of your budget?
This year, looking at a lot of different things, we're adding personnel, that's a safety issue. We've added, we've added so many safety-related things over the past few years, exhaust systems that are in place. Exhaust systems that are in place, our tones that go off at night, that are safer. So the tell, it's, yes, there's things in place. Are we going to look at things in the future? Absolutely. And I think this is a hard look at everything, which is why I'm excited about the state coming in again. And a third-party person coming in to look at all this aspect, to guide us in the right directions and to seek some of these things. This is not the end game. It's moving forward.
So with the six firefighters that you have coming in, what I got back, this is my feedback, is that right now, they are concerned that you have very young firefighters coming in, and what's training them is another young officer. And they just feel that the training is not there, the experience is not there. So maybe I should ask you, do you have senior officers that can be assigned to some kind of training? Because their concern is that a lot of these young firefighters, and you're going to have six new coming in, which probably are going to average what, between the age of 20, 23, 24? So who's training them and who's, who's their mentor when they go out into the field? Is it another 24-year-old with less than two years? So we're asking you as a fire department to provide safety to us, but they're not trained or experienced enough to even take care of themselves in really dangerous situations. And that's the situation that was placed on the two young firefighters. And so that's their concern. And so as we move forward in this budget, the only thing I'm asking is to have some kind of guarantee that right now in place, you will have this experience or you will have someone assigned there to ensure not just safety for the community, but safety first for you, because that's my concern. As a retired first responder, that's what I would like for your firefighters to feel, that when they come to work, that there is safety there for them first, because that's the only way they're going to provide it to us, the experience to understand very dangerous situations. So that's why, I mean, I have a list here of things that obviously is a big void in the fire department right now. And a lot of it has to do with, you just don't have the experienced workers for that. But you do have a senior staff that maybe you can readjust how they are going to train.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're going to look at, it's a constant risk analysis in the fire department. Look at, look at that stuff. Look at some of our senior people. And those, you know, the on-the-job training has been a tradition in the fire service. We have a lot of, there's a gap in the, right now, in the fire service as a whole, as I was kind of explaining the other day. 20-year people are going, are starting to leave. It's a cyclical thing. How do you get ahead of that? Assign mentorships. Make sure that those things, you asked me the other night, and you know, honestly drew a blank. We have programs in place for officer development that I developed, which is actually a write-up program. So someone who's going to write up as an engineer now goes through a process and actually gets checked off to write up in that capacity. Same thing for a lieutenant, and they go through a training portfolio in SOGs and books.
When you say portfolio, it's just books that you provide them?
It's task book, yes.
Task books.
And it's, it goes through numerous SOGs that are related to that position. They review all the different stuff and they're checked off before they're allowed to write in that position, plus time on. Someone who wants to write up as lieutenant has to be an engineer, engineer two, which is now a different task book. They go through that position, go through all the things that are required of that position, and they're vetted before they're allowed to write in that position. District chief, same thing. So there's a succession in progress now for that type of training, for that type of thing. It's not just.
So Chief, a couple of things, I mean, kind of along the same lines. So for the ISO training, that's under Johnny Howe's leadership, right? And he's been on the force for how long? How many years?
Almost 18, 19.
Eighteen, nineteen years. And then, which is all of the mandatory training for ISO. Now, you have training, let's say, somebody wants to train, you know, how to use a chainsaw or how to use our boat, or some of the things that were brought to my attention by Lieutenant Clapper. That's lieutenant's job is for those non-mandatory. So if a firefighter says, "Hey, I want training on, more advanced training on a respirator or on a, you know, the jaws of life," or that would fall to the, to the lieutenants?
The company officers, yeah, that's part of the company training.
And then how long, or what's the kind of the minimum length of time you'd have to be on the job to be a lieutenant?
Well, now it's, requirements are five years plus certain years in grade as an engineer. So you have to test for that position.
So seven, eight years would be a normal. So, so you got Johnny Howe with 19 years' experience that's over all of the ISO training. And then you've got lieutenants that are for your voluntary or your, you know, non-mandatory training, and they're seven, eight years' worth of on-the-job training. So that's, that's your, your level of people that are out there making it happen? Would that be a fair, okay?
Well, what's important is that the training is there and that they have someone with more experience and knowledge to teach these younger firefighters. And I, I don't know, how many lieutenants do you have right now?
We have 21.
21 lieutenants. What's the average time on the job for them?
I would have to look that up, but at least, at least five, seven, eight years. I need specifics.
Well, the only thing I'm asking is, and I'm asking that because that's the feedback I'm getting. And obviously, it took a tragedy to bring a lot up to the surface. Certainly not, you know, just being aware of how the fire department works. And so I just feel that with this budget season, we get to have a little bit more knowledge of how it operates and how we can help here in the council, how we can help you get what you need in order to have a stronger fire department, a much more experienced, and whatever we can provide to you and to your firefighters, sufficient training. And whatever it takes at this point, if you want to do something for the firefighter that you lost is to say, "I'm going to put this in place." Not putting it that we're looking at it, we're doing, "I'm going to put this in place now because this is what I need to do in order to have my firefighters feel safe and for them to have somewhere to go to get that training that they need." And so when we, when Commissioner Nesta asked about the safety committee, I don't think he was asking to investigate this particular tragedy, but to kind of sit down and do an overview. How can we now move forward from this? Where did we, what did we miss? You know, that's what it is. Not to talk about it because you're right, and I know that from my own experience, when something's under investigation, you don't discuss it. You wait until the report comes, and then you wait for some recommendations. But you, as a chief, can say, "What can we do now so that whatever it was that occurred, we realize we shouldn't have it happen again?"
Absolutely.
So that's all I'm asking. And if, and if in your budget, you need to bring in someone, a compliance officer, a health and safety officer training, whatever it takes, I'm asking you to ask us for it. That's, that's it. That's what I'm asking for. Because that's what they're asking from us, so I have to ask you, because you know best what your department needs.
And I understand that that compliance, the QA person is budgeted. We are, again, waiting to see, hopefully, lieutenant.
So right now, you said your Q and A, I guess that's your quality assurance. That person is obviously having some personal family, and that's understandable. But who's doing, is there someone behind that person that can do that job while he attends to that? And I commend you for giving him the opportunity for that, but do you have someone else?
We're not sure if he's going to take it. It's just, I was holding that position for now to see how things were going to work out for him. It's so, it's, right now, currently, QA happens with all of our reports. We review our reports daily, you know, with, with the EMS side, with Chief Sanchez, and the fire suppression side with the district chiefs and with their.
So do we have a building and fire inspector? Because I did ask that. Do we have someone that's currently doing that?
Yeah, that's, so another topic came up, but that's another task that Chief Bowman is delegated with. Is, he also is our inspector. Also, all of our firefighter and company personnel go out and do inspections. It was mentioned earlier that that's against the law. That's not true. We have numbers, number of inspectors who are certified, let's say, in the twenties with our department. But any certified firefighter who is working under the direction during company hours is allowed to do inspections.
So they go on the site on their own and then, but I guess Chief Bowman doesn't go with them or he goes with them? How does that work?
No. Chief Bowman is, he does more of the staff inspections or larger inspections, new construction, things like that. But the company-level inspections, because they're already out doing pre-plans, is also done by our company levels.
And the other, just one more thing, the paramedic training. How many, how many, if you know off the top of your head, how many of them are scheduled or need to have that paramedic training?
Right. Well, we have seven this year, again, that we're going to reimburse. They're in school currently.
Oh, they're in school currently?
Yes. About, some of them are, actually, most of them are about to finish, upcoming in August and stuff.
And I remember I did suggest to you, would it be more cost-effective to bring the program onsite that would allow, it would be more cost-effective, of course, for the firefighter, but for you, because that personnel would be onsite rather than leaving to go to the paramedic school?
When they're at school, they're kind of, it's on their.
It's on their own?
Yes, ma'am, on their own time.
But we at, one time I did have training onsite, did we not?
Yes, but everyone.
Because I do remember that.
Yeah, yeah. Everyone was off-duty though. So if you're in school, you're not part of the daily operations. You're separate. But still having an in-house program is certainly something we're going to look at. Especially for the next nine, they're coming, that's the next amount that's disposed.
Well, I would be glad if you would consider that. I think it would be more cost-effective for them. And we would be able to kind of ensure that they are in paramedic school. Okay.
You good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, so for clarity's sake, you have someone training or that's the Q and A position that is being held? Or there is someone over training already?
Well, it's split right now between two different individuals. Yes, EMS, all EMS training is handled, coordinated through the chief of EMS, which is Will Sanchez. The suppression side, when we orchestrate or organize and have classes coming in, a lot of that set up by suppression chief, Chief Howe. Then also, many of our people, our lieutenants, different chiefs come in. We have outside people that come in and do lots of different training at our training center, if that makes sense. But that is also orchestrated by a lot of different people. So if you have someone that has an expertise, you know, a lot of our lieutenants are the task force team-trained, they'll handle a lot of, they'll train and extrication because they have the expertise, you know? There's a lot of little niches that people have when we look at that, to offer that type of training to our, our staff. Whoever is the most qualified a lot of times does the training.
So you're basically saying we don't need another position as a trainer. We need to reevaluate that we're training correctly and, and look at those standards and are we, such as when I get in an airplane, I have a checklist. I do not skip that. People have taken off with the thing connected to the front tire just to drag it out. Silly things if we don't have procedures. So is that, this is a tragedy, and we're all feeling it. And we, you know, just respectfully, you know, we, it's difficult, you know? No one's trying to be an armchair quarterback. We just want to understand, and we want to do our job here, you know, when it comes to, are you needing some funding for something? If that's going to stop this, then we need to, you know, bite that off and make it happen. If it's simply a matter of saying, "This tragedy is bringing to light. Let's go back over. Let's make sure we're being trained by competent trainers." If you have the ones that can do that, and you're saying basically, again, looking for solid answers, yes. As of now, we are making those changes by reevaluating how we do our training, making sure everyone is training correctly, and that we do have experienced trainers. And so you're telling us that you don't need another trainer to make that happen. You have them there. My only concern is then if this Q and A position, you know, and I love that you're trying to hold it open for one of our own, but we also, I don't know the dynamics of that. I just want to make sure it's not a position that's really necessary and is going to create a possibility of a dangerous circumstance because it's not being filled. You know, I don't know if there's a timeframe that you have set to fill it, and if he can't step in there, then you're going to move on to someone else. But again, just not leaving a gap, leaving an open door. And just those assurances that it is being taken seriously. And we will handle any training positions, and if we need to fund that, we, we need to know that and make it happen.
And again, that's something during this whole process, we're going to evaluate, absolutely. You know, and that's, it's, you know, training is the foundation of the fire service. We know that. And that's why a lot of the times we have this, this stuff. Just to so you understand, QA position is completely separate. QA is quality assurance, so they're the person who reviews reports for accuracy, you know, making sure and all that. That is actually typically a citizen or non-combat personnel. It's just, when this unfortunate opportunity happened, it was something I thought about because we were literally getting ready to fill that position about a month and a half ago. When this happened, that was one of my first thoughts was, okay, let's reevaluate and maybe be able to potentially offer that because he was, he was worried, and rightly so. He didn't know what the rest of his life was going to be, if he could be there during the day or what. So it's something, believe me, it's on the mindset, and we want to move forward with that. So training, we're going to reevaluate it, absolutely. If it's something, you know, I want a little workroom, you know, if you're talking about, so that we can look at some of this stuff coming up.
I just want to make sure there's a meeting of the minds and a real sense that, yes, this is not being shoved under the rug or excused, or that it's like, no, we are going to do the things that are necessary to make sure that we learn from this, honor Austin by looking at all of our procedures and making sure it's being done right.
And that's why, again, I'm excited about the state, and I want that third-party to come in.
And also, it was stated, someone had said that you used to do this position, but there is someone filling the position you used to do?
Yeah, again, it's split between EMS and suppression.
So two people are now doing what you used to do, which was the position of concern. Okay.
And they have other duties. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying they're.
So, so tell us if, if there are too many duties on someone, that they can't do that well. And if that's the case, and we need to fund someone specific for that, you tell us. Because again, I'm not a firefighter. None of us are, but we're in total support. And so we want to do what's the important thing to do, the necessary thing to do.
Again, we're, turn the boots up, the boots on the ground up. We're going to evaluate everything.
Okay, I have two and a half questions. My first question is, or response is, is that we're prepared tonight to give you a full-time position for a safety and training officer, that they have no other responsibilities. Are you willing to accept that?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Then my second question is, how much does it cost for a firefighter to go to the fire academy for what they're required to do?
The academy?
Yes.
With rental gear and things like that, it's probably $3,000, $3,000 to $5,000, depending which school you go to.
Okay, so that was my half a question. So then, Mr. Bass, is it legal, or is it possible for us, for the city, to contract with the fire school that we send our firefighters to the fire school and then they build the city and we pay their tuition rather than the firefighter have to come out of their pocket with that fund?
Commissioner, I don't, I have to do research to find out for you before I speak to that. I've heard of things like that in the past, but we have to do some research. I have to look to Michael from a legal standpoint of what we actually can do. Reimbursements, yes. We can do reimbursements.
I understand the, but if I'm only making $40,000 and then I've got to take $6,000, $7,000 of those to go to school, then I'm really not making $40,000. So, and then we talk about reimbursed, but you know, that's a year, whatever it takes them to complete the school. So if they're already employed by the city, they're our employees, then why can't we make a. So if they're already employed by the city, they're our employees, then why can't we make a contract with the school? And then the school just build the city and then we pay the school and that cuts out the reimbursement because we're paying it and they have all their money in their pocket.
Isn't that what Jerome, I'm sorry Jerome, Chief Miller has said that he was sponsoring three for the police academy? Is there some way that we can sponsor?
Difference between, I think there's, there was, there's the incentive programs in which we give incentives to hire. Now, in this case, what you're asking for, if I'm getting, if I'm getting it straight, is you're bringing a firefighter into the, you're bringing a prospective firefighter into the employee of the city who has not gone to the firefighter, firefighting academy.
If that's what I understand that Chief said.
Non-certified.
That once they're hired, they're non-certified and they have three years to get the certification, is that correct?
Paramedic.
Okay, for paramedic.
To be hired on, you have to be a firefighter EMT minimum.
Okay.
For the paramedic school, yes, that's, that's the, basically what we're doing is we're reimbursing them. If we want to sponsor them for a fire school, those are considered non-cert type programs. They, those do exist, but you literally hire them on as almost a forty-hour employee, send them to the school. Once they're done, then they come, come back to work as a.
Right, so those are the ones that I'm talking about, the ones that we're hiring on and you give them three years to get their
Paramedic.
Paramedic certification. Can we not have the school to bill us and then we simply pay them?
I'd have to want to do, enter in an agreement with the school because if there's more than one, we would have to, that would have to be bid out through procurement in order to do so, as opposed to being a reimbursement program or incentive, which this, the city can reimburse for those costs with an agreement with the employee that they would have to then remain with the city for X amount of time in order for the city to recoup its investment in that employee. And that if they were to leave prior to that time, they would have to repay the city for those costs the city invested in them. But I, I think it would probably work best as an incentive than the city entering into an agreement with, I, right off the top of my head, I don't know if these academies are private academies or, or public. But such an agreement is easier, more easily administered as a reimbursement program, as a tuition reimbursement program to the employee than entering into a contract with a third party to, for that to be billed directly to the, to the city. I think then they're, we're then gonna be stepping into procurement issues that I, that we would needlessly be stepping into.
Well, I, I would like to look into it and see what the possibility is because if I, you know, if I just graduated from high school or college and I'm just starting my job and all of a sudden now I got this three-year commitment that I've got to do. And you said anyway, if we, even during reimbursement, they still have to make a commitment, they're gonna stay with the city for X number of years anyway. So either way, it, I think it works.
It's similar to the, to the law enforcement incentive program that the state passed in which the city, we are currently in the process of looking into. In those types of incentives, the state has imposed, that has authorized local governments to enter into certain agreements that they have to remain in the employ of the city for a set amount of time. And if they were to leave prior to that, that required time, they would actually have to reimburse the city for that incentive. The city's gonna make an advance investment in that person. This is not an opportunity for them to basically get a free certification on, you know, on the backs of the taxpayers of the city of Apopka to then go work somewhere else.
I'm agreeing with that.
All right. Anything else? Good. Okay, Commissioner Nesta?
So you had said that you have a newly established safety committee?
Yes. It was something, when, it was, I mentioned the other night, well, newly established, new, new people on the safety committee.
Why?
Well, we had the retirement of Chief Jones.
Okay.
So when someone reached out, and I don't remember, I mentioned the other night, I really wanted to diversify that safety committee. I want a firefighter, engineer, lieutenant, district chief, and then on up. When that was asked, when I asked that question, Tuesday morning, we went out and got interest and established, again, new being just new personnel to that safety committee, it's been in existence for.
And then Chief Bowman, seems like he wears a substantial amount of hats. What, can you list me every duty that he has other than being chief?
I mean.
I mean, there's safety, train, that he does inspections. What else am I missing?
That's, I mean, he's basically tasked with the training and then his inspection, I'm not, sorry, not training. Life safety, which includes inspections, anything to do with the public and things like that. And also, he's part of, because of that, he's part of the facilities, so he does that sort of task as well. Again, I can give you more detailed.
Well, my point to that is you're saying that he's part of our training and heads training. He's doing ten thousand other things and his head is everywhere else. So somebody that does do a substantial amount of different irons in the fire, I understand that sometimes my irons get a little cold, so to speak. So when it comes to safety, training, inspections, I know he's at DRC meetings, that's concerning that he's doing too much. And if he's head of training.
He, no, he, he doesn't do training.
Who's head of training?
Chief Howe and Chief Sanchez, EMS and suppression.
And that's all they do?
Chief, no, no, that's not all they do. They run the EMS division as well and they also suppression, anything where ordered, anything like that.
So I guess, and, and it's, I tell a lot of people that I feel like I'm gaslit up here a lot, is that it makes me feel crazy because we've had three people so far up here say, we will give you all the money you want. And you say un-enthusiastically, sure, we'll take it. I, I, I guess I, I would expect a workshop, especially with what we're dealing with right now, for you to say, give me all the money I can get. I wanted, I want everybody as, as safe as possible and then we kind of say, no, you don't need gold-lined trucks. But you're not, I, I, I just, I feel that it, you're coming to us and saying, and I understand as chief, you are going through a lot and I appreciate your honesty up here, but at the same time, so are all your men that you represent. And they want to, you to represent them in full force. Chief Miller did it amazingly on Monday. It, it was incredible and I complimented him many times about that. These safety issues didn't just start June thirtieth. I've been having these conversations with the fire department before I got elected, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty. So none of this is new and you say that a lot, that you're thinking about it, we're thinking about doing it, we're planning on it. We'll look into that in action, although action is not helping us in any way. Again, it's just amazing to me that we are willing to throw money at this to help you, to make your job easier, to make everybody's job easier, safer and have the citizens feel safer. And, and it, it, it just comes off as, sure, I guess we'll look into that. And additionally, I just, I, I was really disappointed when you stepped out on Monday when you had a whole line of your men here, obviously willing to speak.
Well, I honestly didn't know they were.
They're not, that, we, that's not a normal workshop, they're not supposed to.
It's a noticed meeting that you did, on the thing, it said public comment.
Well, it shouldn't have been.
Also in the newspaper, it said public comment.
I know, but it shouldn't have been.
So, well, whether or not it was publicly noticed and your men were here. So either way, I, we want to give you money. We want the right people in place. What is happening now doesn't work. So we can do as many, we can hire third parties as much as we want, but there's problems in place that have been here for a while. And we need to start working on those problems back there versus just focusing on what happened June thirtieth. So I guess the overall of this is how much money can we give you? What can we give you to do this right? I, I, I kind of want that answer. I mean, I know we're setting a mileage rate, but I don't want to set a mileage rate with, when we should be funding probably a million dollars more of benefits, staff, whatever it may be.
So, so what other problems? I'm, I'm trying to understand, you said there were some other issues that you, that have you been?
Well, it goes back to a fire department that has a vent going into a, a laundry room. Yes, I understand that we're fixing that, but that was something I saw within five minutes of me being there. There's fire, I mean, talk to your men. I don't know, I mean, they, I can give you an entire list and I'm sure that, I'm happy to set it out.
We think we should, we need, we need to get that list, I mean, because the buildings that were, I know the building was built in two thousand and five. So for seventeen years, it's not been a problem, the vent.
Well, what's it been doing then? I guess, and I don't want to get too, I don't want to get too granular on a, a fire or a dryer vent, but what's been happening? Have we just been accepting substandard?
For, so four fire chiefs have said it's not been a problem, so going all the way back to Anderson. So Anderson and Bronson and Connaughton Solly and now Chief Wilden. Chief Wilden even worked out of that sta, out of station two. So, you know, all of a sudden, it's an issue now.
I mean, but my point is that I don't have that in my house, nobody up here has it in their house, we can't build a house that way, we can't build a building that way. So I understand what you're saying that, hey, we've done it this way, but just because we've done it this way doesn't mean it's the right way.
No, I'm not saying it is, but it just, it's interesting that it comes up, you know, now.
Well, I, I think, and I think it comes to the fact, and you can say whether or not we, we knew the firefighters were gonna be here to speak or not. It comes back to our, if they do speak, will there be retribution?
No.
It seems like there's, I'm telling you, there is a voice of that, that, that is a feeling. There may not be, but I'm telling you what I'm being told from your department. So whether or not that's factual, it's what's happening.
And again, I, I want to speak to that, I, I want my men and women to be able to come talk to me anytime. I, I, I give them, every single firefighter gets a card from me about commitment. Come to me and you, if you're hearing something, I want you to come to me because I need to know about these things.
I, and I understand that aspect, the problem is with that, I'm not the fire chief. I'm a part-time commissioner, you should be in your fire stations every week, what else can I do for you guys? What are we, where are deficiencies? Dishwasher's broken, microwave is broken, what can we get to you right now? I want to make sure the people that are taking care of us are being taken care of.
And I understand that and that's why when all this was mentioned, again, I'm blindsided the other night by a lot of this stuff, honestly.
Well, that's scary, that's the point, that's scary that you're blindsided by stuff. I saw, I was there thirty minutes, forty-five minutes? And I listed things to you.
There's things in place, the, the safety, quarterly safety inspections are established for that very reason. And I'm being told that everything is kosher, there's reports that are here that everything's kosher. I have to assume that I'm being told by my staff because I'm busy too, you know, and I rely on these people to give me the right information. If I don't know about it, I can't help. I mean, that's the biggest thing I want to emphasize to my people and all this difference and things like that. And you as well, if you hear things or, you know, a letter was sent, I, I saw it on social media. It didn't come to me.
What letter are you speaking about?
I guess there was a letter sent from the union to commissioners.
No, there was.
We, we did get one.
No, I didn't get.
Absolutely, we got one.
You're talking the one that was read on June fifth?
It wasn't read. It was sent.
Yeah.
It was requested to be read, it wasn't read. Either way, and I don't want to be, what we want is just to be properly staffed and have a safe environment for our staff. So I guess just a commitment from you that when we come to budget September seventh, that we will have somebody to train and, and a health and safety officer or a, a specific plan for that and not somebody that's wearing multiple hats.
Yeah, well, and, and absolutely, you know, again, we're gonna re, look at all this, I promise, it's not, it's not just, again, being thrown around that it's just being kicked down the road, it's not. You know, these are all things that we're taking very seriously. But understand, most chiefs wear multiple hats, that's just a norm. You know, you have different things like that that, that happen, different responsibilities that fall in, that are related. Hence is why, you know, Chief Bowman is over facilities because a lot of the stuff that his other tasks are, he's tasked with are related to that. Suppression, that's why the suppression chief is over that type, they handle and orchestrate all that type of training. The EMS chief is over EMS, which we're getting ready to start four months of EMS training because it's our two-year cycle where we have to get renewed. So those positions a lot of times are related, but they do wear multiple hats. You asked tonight about the safety and training, let's do it, absolutely. You know, and I'm not saying that half-heartedly, it's that, yeah, anything is gonna help in that aspect. And that will take a lot, but I also don't want to under-utilize the people who are in position who enjoy training. That's another aspect, firemen love to train. You know, and if we can encourage that and keep that moving forward as well, I don't want to ignore that as well.
So is it standard to have a training officer that's focused solely on training? Is that pretty much the way it happens in stations?
Most other places, training in, in something else. So like safety and training or life safety and training or training and such is, is not abnormal by long stakes. And they get a lot, huge departments, like Orange County with thousands and thousands of people, a lot of times they'll have a dedicated training division, so there's multiple people in that, but that is because of their numbers. But most departments our size, it's, it's normal to have multiple hats and different.
So with the training, which now that you've kind of, is it a uniform training? Or do different firehouses and district chiefs train differently? Are they training as they go along on their own or is there something?
Even there's a sign, so there's assigned training each month.
Okay.
Each week actually, that is standardized. And that's actually, a lot of times is developed by the lieutenants. That's, that's part of, and that's sent out to everybody on, on target solutions and they go over certain things like that. They also have the freedom to do individualized training. So if we have someone at station two that wants to train on that day and ladders, there's needs work on pumping the truck. Yes, that, that specialized training can happen that day with that individual, so both.
So there's a, is a combination of both, there's one that has a standard training that is for all the firefighters and then each district chief will decide, you know, we need to train this week on this or whatever.
Each, each company officer, yes.
I, I think the consensus up here is we're asking you, what deficiency do you have right now that we can fill? And again, this is what I'm saying, to help you in your quest to have a fully-staffed fire department right now. Right now, that's what we're asking you. You know, we're, we're hearing different things from different, and, and I will tell you this, probably from relatives of some of the firefighters that have concerns. You know, the tragedy has really heightened some concern, not just for your firefighters, but for their families. And I could remember, I've, I've come here and I've, I've witnessed your oath of office for each of them, as I do with the police officers. We ensure those families that we're going to take care of their family member. And so that's a promise that I think that is very valuable to me. And so this is, and I said it at the very first workshop, this is an opportunity to make some changes, not later, but now. So we're asking you right now, this is your stage, what can we give you right now that will help you in your department?
When we fill that QA position, that's gonna help with the quality assurance. And if you, if the safety and training comes on board, that's gonna help immensely.
So is it two positions?
No, one.
That's all you need?
Because we have, yeah, the QA position is already budgeted, it's already in place.
You're saying it's budgeted, but do we have a full-time health and safety officer? Just one that's dedicated to that? Do we have one in place?
But that's what I'm asking is if you give a QA, I'm sorry, the, the health and safety, which can also oversee training because they are related. That'll be.
Because our chief administrator says that there is room for us, is that correct in what I'm saying? That there's room for us to, to ask for something in addition?
Well, it depends on the amount, but yeah, I mean, if you're, depending, like I said, if you're talking two hundred, three hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, then there's not room.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you're talking two hundred, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, there's not room.
There's not room for that?
Yeah.
So is there room in the current budget with the present suggested mileage rate to afford a training officer position that he's describing here?
If you're talking about one position, adding one position, yes, we can figure out a way to add one position into this budget. But that, you know, keep in mind, you know, that's why you have reserves. If you want to add one position, add, you know, a position and, and, but if you expect any more than that, then, you know, you would need more of a mileage rate.
Well, we're not trying to just throw money at a motion, but we want to address and make sure that these things are covered and that there's a, a consensus within the department that there's an ease, that you know what, we are not ignoring these things and we will do, and I understand, it's still under investigation, so I understand, there's some things you can't say, this is exactly what we're gonna do yet. But just to know that something will be done, we can fund what can facilitate what you discover in this process. And so I, I, I think then we're there.
Yep. All right, anything else for the chief? Okay. All right, any?
All right, any other questions for Edward?
Just one question, the backflows. You know, that was something that we had talked about almost for the last few months. Where are we with the backflow program?
Glenn, you want to?
And I apologize because during the workshop, I thought about it afterwards.
That's what you wanted to ask me. Oh, yeah.
The backflow program.
Yeah. Glenn Brooks, Water Resource Manager, that'd been better, Jorge Garcia, he's kind of over that program. But I will just give you an update of, so what is your question? You want to know where we're at with it?
Where we're at and.
We're in the process of, we hired a new backflow coordinator from the city of Altamont. Oh, I'm going to butcher the name. Anyway, he just started with us Monday and has took over. He was over the city of Altamont Springs, his backflow department. So we have hired him on starting Monday. And as far as I know, our backflow, we're moving forward, doing change outs and.
How many have we replaced?
That's, again, Jorge Garcia would probably have to be better to answer that question. I do not know off the top of my head how many we have replaced, but I can get that answer for you.
Right, okay. Yeah, that's, you know, are we having more residents ask us to do the replacement or are they doing it on their own?
Well, what I've seen, some are coming in and doing it on their own. And I would say it's about half and half maybe, so, but there is some residents.
Yeah, your convenience is, how many are we looking? And I remember you gave me that number and I've kind of lost that, but it was just that one of the residents. I've had like three residents contact me and say, where are we with the backflow? Because I think they have called us and they put themselves on the list. So how many have we done and?
And like I said, I will get to that answer. But the thing that's a little discouraging is I don't understand why the residents would call you guys when everything's out there of who they need to be calling and wanting to do it. But yet they call commissioners on everything.
Right, they do. And that's our job and that's okay.
I understand that, but man, all the information is out there to call our people that will be handling that.
That's okay.
And then we get up here and it's like, oh, they're calling MS and doing it and, you know.
But it was just a general question during the workshop that was not mentioned in that. When someone actually, you know, called and said, it wasn't mentioned, I said, oh, I'll find out. And that's okay. I'm okay when constituents call and maybe we don't have the answers for them. But I think they rely on us to help them get what they need, the information.
I think sometimes a little too much for our likens, but y'all like it, that's good.
Yeah, that's what we're here for. That's why they elect us.
Yes, yeah. But that's why they pay us too. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for.
Anything else is not looking for somebody to make a motion to on the millage rate? We want to leave it the same?
Well, I do remember last, last year you had reduced it one tenth.
Yes.
By leaving it the same, we're not, are we giving ourselves enough room? Or do we bring it back up to that one tenth that it was? Because I know we lowered it. And even then, when we lowered it, we weren't even getting the revenue from the state. So where are we right now? Well, I remember you were saying we were working with a deficit and that's why you had reduced the millage rate last year. Remember, it was during the height of COVID.
Right. Now, we reduced it for, so that, I mean, the homeowners, we thought were feeling the pain. That was the reason we reduced it.
They reduced it because of that. So commissioner, so on this chart here, you can see.
Right.
The yellow is where if you maintain the current rate, if you go up a tenth of a mil, you create $487,000 additional revenue. So I will tell you though, just like I said earlier, this budget is balanced at the current rate. Is that what I say that? If you're looking at one position, we can figure out how to get one position in this budget.
Okay.
I do know, like the chief talked about, he's going to have an analysis done too as well, which I think he's having that done in his current budget currently, a third-party review. So you'll have that report back too. Be able to look at that and see what a third-party said about what we have. But if you're looking at one position, we can figure a way to put a position in this budget. And let me say, when I say that, what we're going to do is, you know, we have, I think we're up to 20 now, police officer positions. They will be kind of staggered the way they're hired because we won't be, as you know, we won't hire all 20 at one time. So we'll probably have some funding. I don't want to mess too much with it because if he has an opportunity to pay for schooling and pay for opportunities, I want that funding to be there for the police. But we can figure out how to work in a position if that's the wishes of the council without having to raise the millage rate.
And the other thing is.
If you want something more than that, then you need to, you would have to go higher.
And the other thing is not raising the millage rate doesn't mean that it's not been a raise on the people because it's 12.87% increase.
Thirty, 21%.
No, no, but the difference between what people are paying themselves.
Right.
Yeah, go, let me go back to the other document.
Oh, you're talking about the, on your staff report.
Yeah, recommended motion, it says millage rate at 4.1876, which is a 12.87% increase over the rollback rate.
Right, and the rollback rate would generate the same revenue.
Rollback rate is literally, it's less, but it's exactly what everybody's paid before. So they're still feeling an increase, even keeping it the same. I just want us to remember that.
Yeah, and keep in mind, everybody's probably, 99.9% of everybody's paying more taxes at this current rate.
Exactly.
Everybody will feel some kind of increase. So keep that in mind. And keep this in mind, this is still a tax increase. People always say, well, if I stay the same, it's not a tax increase. No, this is still a tax increase. The rollback rate would be no tax increase. So they're still doing a tax increase across the board.
A 12.87%, that's what I'm saying. So keeping all of those, these factors in mind, and again, you know, we're coming out from under COVID. But, you know, now we're choosing between our gas tank and our supper table. I mean, this, so there's a lot that people are facing in general, not just this one issue, and that's what I was trying to factor in.
Right, and let me say this too. You know, if you're looking at our citizens, you look at increases across the board, they're going to pay more in garbage with 6%. Utility rates, you saw those, 13% for wastewater, 3.5% for water. So they're going to get hit with other increases. Now, those are separate funds and they have to be funded as enterprise funds. So those fees have to be set for those costs. But at the end of the day, all of our taxpayers will have those increases as well. You know, granted, I know they're separate funds and they fund different things, but they hit everybody. Just every citizen will hit both of those, so.
Okay.
And just, one other thing, just, I don't, I don't know if I think it's in Michael's, the report on the bills that passed, but one of the things that was also passed, you know, was a $50,000 homestead exemption for.
That was for veterans.
This is for, this is for first responders and teachers.
Right, there was one that's subject to the elections. So I think it was in the report. There was, there is, I had the bill putting it for referendum and then the implementation. But that's going to be subject to whether it gets voted upon by the voters.
That's something we have to think about for '24.
Right, for next year, yeah.
That we're going to be hit with that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we come up with a.
Yeah, I'm comfortable making the motion to keep the proposed millage rate 4.1876.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
So.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez.
Mayor, can you, can you read?
Yep, and I'm going to read that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll read this, okay. In accordance with the truth and millage trim requirements, the city must set the proposed millage rate and advise the property appraiser of the proposed millage rate. Rollback rate, date, time, and place of tentative budget hearings. The proposed millage rate is 4.1876, which represents a 12.87% increase over the rollback rate, millage rate of 3.7100. The tentative budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September 7th, 2022, at 5:15 PM in the city chambers. The final budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers.
Can you do a motion to accept those dates?
Got a motion to, to that, got a motion by Commissioner Banksen. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries naturally. All right, thank you, thank you.
Can I go back to this thing, right? We go back to.
All right. Richard Earp, you want to? Sheila Road Drainage Improvements.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I'm sure y'all are all familiar with the Sheila Oaks subdivision. We heard, heard about that earlier. But I wanted to provide you tonight just a short presentation with a brief history of the subdivision. Describe some of the high-intensity, short-duration rainfall events that have caused temporary roadway flooding in recent years and even twice this summer. I want to briefly describe the improvements completed last year and describe additional improvements that are recommended this evening. So the Sheila Oaks subdivision was originally designed in the early 1980s, prior to the existence of the St. Johns River Water Management District and prior to modern stormwater design practices and regulations. This existing, this exhibit depicts the current limits of the special flood hazard area in the area of Sheila Oaks. The special flood hazard area is usually referred to as flood zone A or areas within the 100-year floodplain. On this exhibit, I strongly recommend that all residents whose homes are either in the special flood hazard area or even near the flood hazard area, purchase flood insurance through FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. The National Flood Insurance Program is recommended because the city's FEMA Community Rating System Program, which I run, not only provides residents within the special flood hazard area of a 10% reduction in their flood insurance. The city's participation in the program also includes flood mitigation assistance, grant availability if we did have a resident with repetitive losses, you know, flood insurance or flood losses at their home. The purple dots that you'll see on the map, those represent homes that were actually, when the homes were built, the builder raised those above the 100-year floodplain by putting fill on the lots. All these purple dots, the residents have hired a professional surveyor and gotten an elevation certificate for their home and submitted that to FEMA to ask that their home be removed from the floodplain. So all these purple dots have been formally removed from the floodplain because their homes are higher. And those folks with the purple dots and the people just outside of this blue area, they are able to receive preferred rate of flood insurance, which is much less than flood insurance if you are within the floodplain. So I just want to emphasize one more time that again, I strongly recommend that all residents within or near the FEMA floodplain purchase flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program.
On that note, I just want to, you know, let everybody know how well the job that Richard's doing is that, you know, he stays on top of the FEMA maps because by doing that, we were saving 10% on the flood insurance. If we were lackadaisical or haphazardly, you know, following the rules, people in Apopka would be paying 10% more for their flood insurance. So it's because Richard's really keeps his eye on the ball and makes sure that's, that's, that's critical in saving those dollars for our residents.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I look at a lot of developments too, and there's a lot of creative ideas related to the floodplain, but I have to make sure they stick to the rules. Okay, street flooding, high-intensity, short-duration, temporary street flooding wasn't a major concern or might not have been a concern at all since the subdivision was built in the 1980s. But since about 2017, most of those years, we've had one or two events where streets have flooded like you see in the picture here temporarily. After the heavy rainfall stops, the flooding recedes, definitely within an hour, in most cases within 30 minutes or so. So the improvements that we've done over the last year, we installed a total of 14 inlets. Nine at the intersection of Mill Run Circle and Saddleback Ridge Road, five at the intersection of Larkwood Drive and Crossfield Drive. I'll note that these inlets continue to function. And although we have had two street flooding events that I'll talk about in a moment this year, those inlets do continue to function and they do mitigate the frequency and the duration of the temporary street flooding. So the two events I'll talk about, they were mentioned earlier to you tonight. One was on May 21st of this year and the other one was on July 13th. So first of all, this might be hard to see on your slide, but this is a rain gauge near Sheila Oaks. So on May 21st, from about 9:30 PM till about 10:30 PM, we had 6.47 of inches of rainfall occur, which exceeded the capacity of the drainage system and it caused temporary street flooding. Also, we, that evening, I was looking at the NOAA National Weather Service because I was getting emails about, you know, the street flooding in Sheila Oaks. So I looked at the National Weather Service and they called out this red square right in the area of Sheila Oaks. There was an isolated cell, again, super-high intensity rainfall in the Sheila Oaks area. Then on July 13th, from about 8:50 PM till about 9:30 PM, again, with a rainfall gauge near Sheila Oaks, recorded two separate rainfall events. Each produced about 3.53 inches of rainfall over about 40 minutes. So that amount of rain over 40 minutes equates to about seven inches of rain per hour. And with that, I'll note that the Florida Department of Transportation, counties, cities, all design roadways for a maximum of four inches of rain per hour of rainfall intensity because you just, you can't physically drive your car. You can't see out of the windshield when it's raining more than four inches per hour. And both of these storm events that have happened this year have both well exceeded that number. So I've also gotten some emails here this summer that several residents also believe the city should be pumping down Lake Hammer as the city has done during recent heavy, during the rainy seasons in past years. And back in 1990, the city got a permit to pump the lake down because in the mid-'90s, we got so much rainfall that the lake actually rose up and began to back up in the storage, in the drainage system. That's not what's happening now. What's happening now is we have short-duration, super-heavy storms. Storm drain system can't handle it, floods the streets for 30 or 40 minutes and it recedes right away. So it's not the lake that's causing that flooding in the streets. The city has a permit with the St. Johns River Water Management District that does not allow the city to pump the lake lower than elevation 79 feet. So last summer, we installed a rain gauge and we got some GPS survey points. And so the rain gauge in the picture there shows the lake, it's been sitting fairly steadily at elevation 77. And until it gets to elevation 79, the state will not let the city pump the lake down. So we haven't. So with the flooding that's happened recently, we've spent a lot of time, we've coordinated internally with staff and listened carefully to the residents and their concerns. And we are currently developing construction plans and I'll recommend some drainage improvements in a moment. The idea is those drainage improvements will direct the flow more directly to Lake Hammer. Of course, we are going to need a St. Johns River Water Management District to change the drainage system around. And the estimated cost for those improvements is going to be about $250,000. Here's a picture of those improvements. So the design, this is a preliminary design that we worked on last week and that we're continuing to refine. We're actually have a meeting with the contractor tomorrow to talk about pricing for this alternative. So this preliminary design on the slide shows a more direct route to get the water into the lake. It takes water away from the intersection of Saddleback Ridge Road and Mill Run Circle. And we believe these improvements will include the effectiveness of the drainage systems at both Saddleback Ridge Road at Mill Run Circle and Larkwood Drive at Crossfield Drive. Basically, all the water from way up on the hill right now comes down the hill, makes a sharp right at one inlet, goes half a block over, makes a sharp left and then goes into the lake. And this improvement will let the water come down the hill and continue essentially straight into the lake without having to weave its way through an intersection. So my last slide is a request for direction from city council to allocate $250 from the coronavirus relief funds to the Sheila Oaks Drainage Improvement Project.
Any questions for Richard?
No. I have to say, because I know I've spoken to you several times, and although that's not my special, it's yours, I'm happy that we are doing this for those residents. I know it's not a lot of residents, but, you know, when you invest everything in one home, it's their life savings, it's their livelihood. So I hope that this will help to relieve that. So I hope that this will help to relieve that, like you said, the sudden rainfall that comes in that area is what really is causing the flooding there.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
And I'm glad you explained it. When I received the emails, I didn't respond to the emails, I actually went to the site and sat there to watch the rain gauge and to see if it was reaching that 79-foot gauge that's there. And it wasn't, and I noticed there is a pond there as well. So now that you explain the reason why it's turning and going down the street rather than going directly into the pond, so it's not that the lake is overflowing, it's just not getting off the streets fast enough. So that makes sense and...
Well, it's really not that. What's happened is by adding all the extra inlets, the pipes underground are filling up so fast that then it's backing up. And so what, I went there the morning after and the manhole cover, which weighs, I don't know, 50, 75 pounds, was popped, popped up, which means the water had come out of the, pushed the hole, it was full and was pushing the lid off. So we solved one problem by putting all the inlets, but we kind of exacerbated the problem because it had to go through the same, those two 90-degree turns, which is where we lost all of the momentum. So by just running the top side of Sheiler Oaks straight into the lake, we eliminate a lot of the pressure off the mill run, which is where the low area is. So, I mean, and I'll tell you, I credit the staff, all the engineers, I mean, we were talking about it and they were first wanted to go ahead and get a, you know, an $80,000 study, have an engineer come in and look at it like, guys, we know this, we're not sure it's 100% effective, we know it will make an impact, but rather than spend $80,000 and take four or five more months to get that done and then decide whether it will or won't work, let's just go ahead and put the money in, let's do something. We know we'll have an impact, maybe not to the extent we think it will, but we know it will have an impact. Would that be a fair statement, Richard?
And we do have the pump rated roll, it's been serviced, and if the lake does come up to elevation 79, we'll be out there pumping the first day.
Would it be beneficial, I know there was a discussion of doing, to the mayor's point, an additional study, but specifically with water flow projections, things like that, just to, I guess, help with this, or I just, I'm worried that we're going to be reactionary. This will 100% help in some capacity, for sure, but will it be enough? I don't know. So I don't know if that's going to be beneficial. What was your guys' thoughts on that?
Well, I thought I might get that question since we talked about that in the field. So in principle, an engineering study is the best approach. But practically, and after further investigation and seeing the manhole lid popped and talking with other staff and residents in the area, we believe that at this time, spending 180 to $100,000 on a detailed engineering study and then coming up with a plan and then ordering materials, which raw materials and delivery and gas to get things is taking forever to get construction materials. So instead of going in that direction, we think, we feel confident that redirecting the flow into the lake is going to do a lot of good, and that's the approach we recommend at this time.
Come on, sure, sure, sure. So come on up, you need to give your name and address for the record.
Logan. Yeah, I had a couple of questions, so I don't live...
Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I don't, Esmeralda Rebel Walker, 1952 Larkwood Drive. I do not live in the flood zone area, so I don't live around Lake Hammer, so I just wanted to clarify that. And then I just wanted to, if you could explain how the water will be redirected, I just, and then if we have like, I guess, an approximate timeline of when that will be started.
Timeline is based on materials and we're, you know, we, the inlets we put in, we were Robin Peter to pay Paul, we got inlets that didn't even match, but we made them work. So I know that, we're talking months, we're not talking days or weeks, I think. Would that be a fair assessment, Richard? I mean, we can hunt around and try to find, I think, what, 36 inch?
Yes, the construction company we're using does a lot of work and has done a lot of work with DO and Orange County, and we think that they have a probability of having some of this material on site. They kind of saw this coming, you know, the economy hasn't been kind of going downhill right away, it's taken a while, and it's a company that does a lot of business, so hopefully they've stockpiled some of this material, is what we're hoping.
I'm sorry, how will it be redirected? I'm not an engineer.
It'd just go straight down the hill, just straight down Larkwood.
So when you go in and you pass the pond, you get to the first intersection, that's the manhole lid that popped up. So instead of directing that water down, you know, when you take a left at the stop sign, where most of the flooding occurs, the water would just kind of continues, really kind of straight towards the pond.
Be the edge of your, be the edge of your, that little field on the lake?
The park.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, anybody else want to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the allocation of $250,000 from the coronavirus relief funds to the Sheiler Oaks Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, memorandum of understanding with the Orange Audubon Society, Radley.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to ask for approval to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Orange Audubon Society for development of Hickerson property into the Apopka Birding Park. October 23rd, 2018, St. Johns River Water Management District conveyed the Hickerson property to City of Apopka for use as a location for nature-based recreational and educational opportunities to help fulfill the recreational programming needs required to develop these new opportunities. Staff have been in discussions with the Orange Audubon Society with the goal of establishing a partnership to develop the property into Apopka Birding Park. The attached memorandum of understanding, which includes the scope of fulfillment for the partnership, has been developed and reviewed by staff, the city attorney, and the Orange Audubon Society. And property enhancements such as a restroom facility and new entrance gate are currently budgeted this fiscal year. I do have the president of the Orange Audubon Society here with us this evening, Mrs. Deborah Green, and I know she's going to have a few words at the public comment.
Any questions for Radley about the agreement? Okay, Deborah Green, why don't you come on up?
I am Deborah Green, Orange Audubon Society, PO Box 941142, Maitland. And thank you very much, Mayor, for, this is going to be a great partnership. This 70-acre property is perfect for a birding park because of its location at the start of the Lake Apopka Wildlife Drive and because it's upland habitat, whereas most of the rest of the North Shore is wetlands. And upland habitat is good for sparrows and other birds that are desirable for birders. Orange Audubon Society is a 55-year-old chapter of National Audubon, third largest in the Southeast, and we've been preparing for this moment by growing native plants at home and by making the contacts to hire the most appropriate contractors to help us accomplish the goals here and to get grants. And we've earned and saved the money to pay for managing a good portion of the property. And having a nature center on the Lake Apopka North Shore, which is such a fantastic place, has been our goal for 20 years. So I thank you, Mayor, thank you, Radley, Attorney Rodriguez, and you Commissioners for supporting this partnership.
Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, awesome, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you so much.
I kind of see Steve in the audience, so am I going to start seeing some photos from the bird park?
Yes, I meant to thank Steve for coming out. Steve is a big fan of the Lake Apopka Wildlife Drive.
Yes, he is.
And my colleague Kathy Wrigley, who's our education coordinator and will be doing teaching of schoolchildren out there.
Should be, it'll be a great partnership. We're looking forward to it with Camp Weewah and Magnolia Park Improvements. I guess we got the big ribbon cutting on Friday. So it's, yeah, we've got, that's a great, you know, location now for a lot of, you know, great things to happen. So we look forward to a great long-term partnership with Orange Audubon and couldn't be happier. Okay, all right. Look for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding between the Orange Audubon Society, Inc. and the City of Apopka.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, League of Cities Proposed Resolutions, you've got all four of them in...
I did, and you know, I...
You want to go over them with us, Forrest, Diane?
You know what? That's what I left on my desk at home. So I was hoping, oh, here they are. Thank you, because I did. One is, I actually read, the City of Lakeland, which is, here it is. Okay, Philip Walker, who is the Commissioner of the City of Lakeland, served as President of the Florida League of Cities from 2021, and so they passed and adopted the Florida League of Cities in conference assembled at the League's 2022 Annual Conference at the Diplomat Beach Resort in Hollywood this day. So this is basically just recognizing Philip Walker and his service for, as president for the Florida League of Cities. This one is a resolution, okay, 2022-2, a resolution of the Florida League of Cities recognizing the week of October 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Florida City Government Week and encouraging all Florida city officials to support this celebration by participating in the "My City, I'm Part of It, I'm Proud of It" activities. This one is 2022-3, a resolution of the Florida League of Cities Incorporated in both recognition and celebration of the 100th anniversary of the League and honoring this momentous occasion. And the last one, 2022-04, a resolution of the Florida League of Cities Incorporated urging Congress to reauthorize the National Flood Insurance Program. So those are the four resolutions that are proposed, and I will be representing the City of Apopka as one of the delegates. So thank you to the Commissioners on the board here for allowing me to represent the City of Apopka, although I volunteered. Kind of twisted Commissioner Alexander Smith's arm, like, give me the opportunity.
Is that what happened?
So thank you very much, and I will be at the conference in August, and I will be the delegate for our city. So thank you again for the honor.
Absolutely. All right, look for a motion to approve the proposed resolutions for the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference.
Here you are, thank you.
So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2938.
Ordinance number 2938. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the ordinance number 2858, which is known as the Ridge Plan Development PD, generally located north and south of Boy Scout Road, west of State Road 451, north of State Road 414, and west of State Road 429, comprising 407.8 acres more or less, owned by Troyus Bronson Family LP, Bronson Troyus Life Estate, Apopka Centerline Development LLC, KS Apopka Centerline Development LLC, DRP Florida LLC, AG EHC II, Len Multi-State One LLC, and Ridge 429 Owner LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jim, any changes? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2938.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2944.
Ordinance number 2944. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the herein after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Ronnie B. Phillips and Wanda R. Phillips, located east of Ocoee Apopka Road and north of West Keene Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jim, any changes?
No changes.
Okay, anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2944.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2947.
Ordinance number 2947. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the herein after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Kelly Park Self-Storage LLC, located south of Kelly Park ROA and west of State Road 429, specifically 3612 West Kelly Park Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jim, any changes?
No changes.
Okay, anybody here to speak on ordinance number 2947? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2947. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2949.
Ordinance number 2949. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 58, Solid Waste, Article 2, Municipal Refuse Collection Services, Division 2, Generally, Section 58-67 Fee Schedule, residential, fee schedule residential, to establish a rate schedule by amending Chapter 58, Article 2, Division 3, Commercial Establishments, Section 58-103 Fee Schedule, non-residential, to establish a rate schedule, providing for codifications, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and setting an effective date.
Michael, any changes?
No changes.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2949.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, the second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2948.
Ordinance number 2948. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the boundaries of the ridge at Apopka Community Development District, established pursuant to ordinance 2859, providing for severability clause, addressing conflicts, and providing an effective date.
All right, Michael Rodriguez, City Attorney. The item before you is the, is an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the CDD. This item is related to the rezoning and amendment to the PD that you just earlier approved at second reading. What this is doing is now amending, this is related to the Community Development District, which you previously approved for the ridge. This is actually doing the same housekeeping changes they did to their, to their PD, applying to the CDD to establish the jurisdiction of the Community Development District. These are the solely, the only changes that this ordinance has been, is doing as requested by the developers. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for Michael? Okay, anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2948 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2022-30.
Resolution 2022-30. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, authorizing the City of Apopka to make, execute, and deliver to the State of Florida Department of Transportation the Landscape Construction and Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement.
Good evening. Almost missed my opportunity. We've been trying to put uplighting in the medians right out here on either side of Park Avenue to show off our beautiful Majuul Palms. And I've been trying for over two months to get a permit from DOT, and finally they told me, you don't need a permit, you need an agreement. So we're having, this is to ask you to approve the agreement to maintain the uplighting in the trees and everything that we've been doing since 2011 anyway, and then the resolution to allow the mayor to sign so that we can put the uplighting. And I've directed the contractor, if you approve tonight, I've asked them to do the directional bore tomorrow, I don't know if they're going to be able to or not, but if not tomorrow, Friday or Monday, so moving forward.
Which will be water and electric, right?
They're doing, we've already got water out there.
Okay, okay.
It's just the, we've just got to get the electric out.
Okay. All right, any questions for Pam?
Just reminds me, so the Gray...
Just reminds me, so the great Oz has told us, we don't need a brain, we just need a diploma.
Something like that.
Mayor, can I ask a question real quick? So Pam, I'm, I'm just making sure, so will this apply to future, or is it only those two? Do we have to do an agreement every time?
We have to do one every time. We should have done one before, but you know, that predates all of us, so I can't speak for those people.
We'll be back probably.
But at least we know, we have it all down now, we just copy paste.
Okay. All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-30.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2022-31.
Resolution Number 2022-31. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing the rate of schedules pertaining to City of Apopka Municipal Refuge Collection Services and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Josh Robinson, Public Services. So this is just establishing the current rates by resolution that you just approved, the change in ordinance, and we'll be back the end of September to ask for the increase. But, so these will just be the current rates. Questions?
Any questions for Josh?
Uh-uh.
Okay, anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-31.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Whew. All right, Commissioner Velasquez, you want to get us started?
Um, it's, first I wanted to just say that it's, it's been a busy week for us with the workshops. It's always enlightening, and I have to say that it's, it's been a challenging for me, especially it's been emotional, challenging, but I feel that we have done a good job, and I'm satisfied, and just want to say thank you. You know, and, and again, you know, we were all dealing post, you know, the tragedy that we all are dealing, we understand that, we're all feeling it differently, but we certainly, I just want to let the fire department know that they continue to be in my prayers, and if there's anything that they need, that they should just feel that they can still come to us, and, and we hope that we are doing the right thing by them. And so that's basically it. You know, it's just been a busy weekend, and I look forward to, you know, as we move forward, and, and again, to welcome you back, Ed, you have been missed, so thank you.
Commissioner Banksen?
Yeah, I could obviously echo those things. Again, as I mentioned on Monday, that was the most honorable demonstration of brotherhood and love I've ever seen, and it was very moving, and I know that took a lot of work to, to pull that off, so thank you for honoring Austin in that way. Another thing, of course, we were today over at Wheatley Elementary, and I was very pleased with, with that, there was a celebration of the school's grades coming up, and I'd served on the SAC board a while back, actually Commissioner Smith was there, so I thought, well, we can't be at the same place, so I went ahead and stepped off to let him in there, but, you know, I just, I believe in the history that's there, there's a rich history, Phyllis Wheatley's amazing woman herself, and just hated seeing that it was beginning to crumble in the community, and there were so many people that worked so hard, that Mrs. Miller, the principal, amazing woman. And so they brought those things up, and I remember while I was there one day, just looking at Wheatley, and all of a sudden, you know, you see how it's spelled, and it's W-H-E-A-T-L-E-Y, and the A.T., I thought, you know, that looks like an A-plus to me. And I drew up a, you know, you can't spell Wheatley without an A-plus right in the middle. And, and we just challenged ourselves at that time, let's aim for the top, and that seemed so far, because it was very near failing at that point. And I'm just excited that the community is coming together, great leadership, and of course, the baton then was passed on.
Right.
Now to-
To Principal Brown.
To Principal Brown, and, anyway, just was real excited to be a, a part of that, to witness that, and, you know, those kind of things are just good for us as a community.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I too would like to express my condolences and prayers to the family as well. Unfortunately, I was out of the state at the date of the service, but my prayers was definitely with the family, and continues to be with them, and with the entire department, as you said, that you all are a family, and I'm sure that all of you are still grieving, and so our prayers are with you that you will get through this, this storm in your life. As our Vice Mayor said, that we were at Phyllis Wheatley this afternoon, the celebration of them becoming a B-school, and not that I'm that old, but I also attended Phyllis Wheatley a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
So it was indeed a pleasure for me to be there, to, to witness the celebration as well, and the outstanding job, as the Vice Mayor said, that the, the community and all the elected officials as well came together to support the school during their time when they were struggling to improve their grade in the community. And, and because of the outstanding job that Principal Miller did, she was promoted, and now they have a, a new principal, they had served as a assistant principal, so she was there along with her to, to see that take place, so she'll be able to take the baton and keep it going, and we're going to continue to be there to support the school in whatever way that we can, and so just a great, great, great event.
Definitely, yeah, and basically the same thing, it's just, I want to say thank you to the residents of Apopka for coming together in our time of need, while we've been going through this, the strength of a, a city and a family can be definitely be seen in hardship, and, and it's really impressive to see kind of how the city came together in this time of need, so thank you to the residents, and then obviously, congrats to the teachers and staff and, and the principal at Phyllis Wheatley for achieving what they did.
All right. Edward?
I just have a one comment or whatever, I'm, I'm not 100% back, but I can tell you what, I'm glad to be back, and thank you for all your support and patience with me.
Well, I, I can tell you, you know, Edward was, obviously wasn't in the office a lot for the last, you know, 90 or 120 days, but he never, never quit, I mean, he was home, we were talking, you know, talking to him on the phone, and, and trust me, I was, I wasn't doing even half his job, but I was, I was, I was swimming in, in, in city administrator duties, and so when you, when you step into somebody's role, you kind of figure out, wow, you know, how much they do, which you don't, you kind of take for granted, and, and so have a, have a renewed appreciation of what city administrator Edward Bass does, and couldn't do it without you, man.
Okay, City Attorney, Michael?
Our presentation is related to, I submitted to you this year electronically, sorry I didn't give you the nice binder with the little plastic covers I did last year, but saved a few trees in the, in the process. My report deals with the 2022 Florida Legislative Bill Summary. This summarizes those bills that affect us as a local government the most. This is, I believe, the second I've done here for the City of Apopka, but it's all, I've done these in previous jurisdictions. Of note, this is the first time ever I've actually decided to highlight a vetoed bill, and that was because, for reasons unknown to me, the governor vetoed what I called the mother of all preemption bills, which was that any ordinance passed by a local government, if it affected business profits by a certain percentage, would be subject to being sued. It also, he also vetoed, actually, I'm sorry, the other bill that failed was the requirement that every local ordinance passed by a local government had to include an economic impact statement, every ordinance. Thankfully, both of those failed, one failed in committee, and I think the governor vetoed the second one. So we do not have to worry, at least for this session, that the legislature is going to continue to preempt our Home Rule authority. The other bills of note, important at least to note, was mentioned, there is the current pending homestead exemption, which is going to cover law enforcement, I believe, teachers, veterans, it's an additional 50,000, on the 100,000 of value for one classification of, of citizens, and 150,000 of value to another one. With the recent history of how these referendum go, there is, the likelihood is that it will obtain the 60% vote, affirmative vote to pass, so this is something we'll have to take into consideration for future reference. One of the other ones of note is something that may affect, and we might actually have to probably bring this up either as part of our glitch, our usual glitch bills of the Land Development Code, or as a separate amendment to the Land Development Code. The legislature has determined that local governments have to actually create a zoning category as a permitted use for floating solar cells. So I have actually, after writing this summary, I've actually become cognizant and have seen several of these floating cells. Basically, they are floating solar arrays that are floating within a lake or other body of water, I think mainly it's really indoor, inland lakes. So now, the legislature has deemed that we have to, as a local government, permit these uses under our Land Development Code and whatever appropriate zoning category, so that's probably something we'll be working with Community Development to present that amendment to the Land Development Code to now allow for these floating solar arrays. They're not very large, I think some of the ones I've seen just in, in traveling, you know, they're just what you think they are, they're like floating pontoons with solar panels on top of them, but it's a way of maximizing the amount of land you can use to increase the viability of solar energy in the state of Florida. A lot of the other ones, the legislature wasn't as direct and impactful as they have been in the past. One measure of note that, probably have to sit down with our Human Resources Department to see what impacts it may have, and that was the bill that the governor calls the anti-woke bill, or what, what moniker he's using for it now, but it has the potential, because it's not necessarily clearly written, it may have the potential of affecting certain educational issues that are raised in a human resources way, especially in, in determining either lessons or, or different courses dealing with the effects of discrimination, or, you know, discrimination in the workplace, that may run afoul of the language that was presented in the bill, which could open, the problem with some of these bills, what's happening is that the legislatures have empowered private citizens to bring, bring these lawsuits, and unfortunately, you can't stop somebody from suing for the most frivolous of reasons. This is something, I think that, I think it is not related, this one is separate from the schools bill, which is currently in, is subject to litigation, but it's something that our Human Resources Department has to be cognizant of, to not run afoul of the language in the bill. Aside from that, there were some other, there have been, there are new public records exemptions, the GPS locators in our police vehicles are no longer, are now exempt from public records inspections, and then there's other, there's now mandatory cybersecurity training that local governments have to, have to conduct, that was passed by the legislature. But that's a gist, you have the summary of all the bills that were passed that have a direct effect, and now the process begins to see the next round of, you know, hopefully we won't have more Home Rule taken away. If you have any questions, I'm-
Any questions?
I'll try my best to answer.
I just hope they've done the right studies on the floating cells and how that, that shading the water will affect things, temperature-wise, everything, I'm, I'm hoping that that study's been done, because, you know, sometimes you think that's a good idea, but that is going to be shading the water underneath it, so less light, I don't know if it'll fit, affect temperature, or how that affects-
I don't know.
Plant, the fish, life, those different things. Is there, is there a percentage on the lakes that, it's like you, you can only cover so much, or, I mean, do they just-
Don't recall if the legislature went into those specifics, now those are things that we can study in, in developing what these are permitted uses. I think if anything, these may actually assist with definitely large subdivisions that create water retention areas, these are, you know, man-made ponds, and now you've got land which was taken for a water body that's really for stormwater retention, and now it can use, be used for dual purpose, for both water retention as well as a potential renewable energy source.
That's, because that's one of the things I'm working on, is I got Glenn Brooks and Dio over there, going to work on my solar panel array at the Golden Gem Pond, so we ought to have that one in wind next week, next month?
For our Friday.
Yeah, by Friday, there you go.
Anything else, Michael?
That's it.
Good. Okay, thank you. Okay, got quite a few things here, yes, as we all, you know, kind of remember Austin Duran, I just, I'm going to try to put together an editorial for the chief, not for this Friday, but next Friday, try to thank all the people, all the organizations that, you know, came out and support, you know, along the way, not only during the illness, but all, you know, ultimate passing, but the one I just want to highlight tonight, I just, it was amazing, a lady had, had rented the VFW for All Day Saturday, she was a religious organization, and so from 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM, and, and so I said, can you shorten it? Well, no, really, I've got programming all the way through to 5:00, and I said, okay, I said, I said, listen, we've got, you know, a firefighter has just passed away, and they want to do the, do a memorial after, after the funeral at the VFW, is there any way I could get you, if I could find somewhere to go, would you, would you consider it? Without hesitation, yes, I will, and so I start reaching out, and reached out to First Baptist Apopka, they said, we're all in, let us know, and so here's, here's somebody who didn't know Austin from anybody, that came in, moved their, their event, which was, had been scheduled, you know, months out, and here's First Baptist, that doesn't know this group either, that stepped in and, and with open arms, had this, this group here at their church, so, you know, that's the, there's a, there's plenty of stories just like that, you know, as it relates to, you know, to, to Austin, and so I just, it was just really touching for me when, you know, I, you know, make those calls, and, and everybody, you know, what can we do to help, and so I'd like to put together something, and you got to be careful when you do those, because when you, when you start naming one or two names, you got to name them all, but I think it's, it's worth a try, so anyway. Want to give you an update on the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, got a list in your, in your packet or, that, of the folks that are on the committee, so we're, we're going to get right to work, we're trying to put together a Hispanic festival on September 17th, so we're going to hit the ground running.
Can I just mention this?
Sure.
Back when you did mention it, because I did go back and I did send a, an email to, to the Chief Administrator, was that we had no input on this, we had none, and when I saw the names today, I did ask for this list earlier in the month, because it would have provided an opportunity, at least for me, and I'm speaking on my part, to have had some kind of input as to the selection, and when I look at all the names, although I know them all, they all belong to the chamber.
Um, no.
They all belong to the chamber.
No, they don't.
Except the last one, Joan Johnson.
Last, I don't think Mark, I don't think Mark Wright's a member.
I'm sorry, say that. Mark Wright lives in, well, Mark Wright I do know from, you know, from over the years that he has participated in some, but I just feel that part of this City of Apopka Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, I feel personally that we should have all, and I mean each of us here in the day, is, should have provided someone that we felt could have been part of the committee, and although I respect every name that's up here, because I do know them, I just feel that we did not have any part in it, and again, speaking for me, I would like to have recommended someone, and that among each of us, we could have submitted a name and had that considered. So I just feel that all these names, besides the last two, do come from the chamber, and she is, Kate Manley is also working to create a Diversity, Inclusion, and Alliance Committee, so I don't know, have you committed to each of them, that they're part of it?
Yes.
Now, you had mentioned-
Is it possible to add to the committee?
I mean, if, if that's what y'all want, you want to add-
If each one of us nominate a person, just make it a committee of 10?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I just feel that we should have been included from the very beginning.
Okay, next up, events at the amphitheater, I just want to kind of, kind of interesting, Dirty Heads, last weekend on the 16th, we had north of 5,000 people, I'm guessing 6,000 people, so I tell you, you know, when you go back and you look at Saturday Sounds, and even though it was a free event, you know, it opened eyes to a bunch of people about how great a facility we had, and- And so we're starting, you know, people are, you know, starting to look at us as, as a place to book. And so we've got the Ying Yang Twins coming July thirtieth. We've got the Heart and Soul Music Festival with the Isley Brothers on Saturday, October eighth. And we got Government Mule on Saturday, October fifteenth. All big, big names that I don't think we'd have had a chance of getting them two years ago. So I credit the Parks and Rec Department for, you know, the idea of getting that amphitheater used and then getting that, that name and the, the ID out there. So we are, we're excited about that. Also got the Florida Jerk Festival, Orlando featuring, featuring Jamaican cuisine, Caribbean music and cultural spirit on Sunday, October twenty third. Next up, want to, had a, an event down in South Popco on Thirteenth Street. A lady's has a, I guess, a double wide trailer that I know Commissioner Smith knew or knows well. And Apopka came together, the Chamber, along with Paula White's City of Destiny and
City serves.
City serves. I mean, and I, and it was one of those ultimate makeovers. And it started on Monday morning and finished up Friday afternoon at three o'clock. So what an amazing event. I was, the, the football team, the Apopka High School Football Team asked me to come out and cook for them. So I cooked breakfast and lunch. So they were all doing the grunt work, getting the rip out stuff and tear up the carpet and do all that. But what an amazing transformation in, in four short days.
Oh, yes.
So that was, yeah, it was really, really a neat
She's still crying.
Yeah, she was, she was pretty, pretty excited about it. And next thought is got an opportunity for an additional library. I, I don't say an opportunity. I at least put it on the, the Orange County Library's radar. Had a good, good, good discussion with them. We are now with our, our Ad Valorem, we're sending Orange County about one point nine million dollars for library, you know. And we've just got the one library here on the east side of town. And so I said, listen, is there, is there a way that we can look at somewhere up toward the northwest side of town for something additional? And so they said, we're, obviously everybody's, you know, funds are never just plentiful. But they said, let's start out with some programming. So I think we'll see in the next several months, we'll start to look at some programming in, you know, southwest, northwest, which is where our growth areas are. And then maybe transition, you know, maybe partner with them for a year or two until they can build a full scale library here in Apopka. So I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. Yeah. So we had a really nice discussion and they, they understood, you know, where we were coming from. Next, I had Harmon Road. We had another offer on the Harmon Road. So we, we go back to, you know, the, you know, the, do we want to move the antenna or not? Sell the property, twenty-three acres. So I, I think, I think we've, Jim, you sent it to all the commissioners. So everybody's got that. Just kind of think through that. If, if, if we want to leave it where, you know, leave the tower there, do we want to move it? Or put a new one on the, the eight acres and sell the twenty-three? But the offer was six point three, six point five million, something, yeah. So anyway, six point four, right in the middle. So anyway, something to think about if we wanted to, to, you know, at the point where the antennas, do you want to move it or not? That's, that's for a discussion at the next meeting. I'd like, I'd like to kind of go on an in-depth discussion on that.
And where are we talking about, moving it to?
We've got the eight acres on the, on the
On the opposite side of the road?
Yes, correct, north, north side. And then just sell the whole twenty-three acres.
Do we have, if we do sell it, is there like a plan for those funds or what?
No, it's utilities. So it's, it's, it's owned by the utilities.
Okay.
So it would stay within the utility department. So it could go toward an additional water plant, which, that we're going to be putting one in that, in that area anyway. So you could take the eight or nine acres, put the antenna and a water plant. And water plant, I think it's twenty to twenty-five million. So I mean, you pay a third, yeah, pay a third of it. But anyway, I would like to address it one way or the other. If, 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 if the, if the answer is no, we don't want to sell it and move the tower, then I'm okay with that.
Well, I'm thinking also give us a cost and what it's going to cost us to move the tower.
Right.
Or with the buyer, they even move the tower.
Yeah. I know Rob's got some information.
Yeah, so Robert Hippler, Information Technology Director. I had all this information, I want to say at the end of last year when we were talking different tower discussions. Back then at that time, the tower to move it was going to be about two point seven five million. And that's a new building, new generator, using the existing radios and everything we have. But that's what the cost of the, the move would be. And that's through using our existing contractor Motorola. Now, there are options out there such as having a independent tower builder come in, build the tower. The, the cost could be potentially a little bit lower. And I do have a cost, well, I had a cost number on that close to a year ago, but I can assure you it's fifteen to twenty percent higher at this point. So that's another option. They can do that. And then again, have Motorola put their hardware back into it or, you know, if we're buying the building, depending which route we're going with it. There's still going to be a cost for Motorola. Another option is to have a carrier come in, such as AT&amp;T, who wants to get into the area for their first net and have them build the tower. And then we give up the leases for that. So we have currently two cellular leases on the tower. And, you know, if we want to give those up, then they would do the tower now. There's some caveats with not owning the tower. We lose control of what's actually going on to it. And, you know, that is a public safety communications tower. And, you know, you don't think anything would happen to it. But we had an incident happen out here about six or seven months ago, the tower right outside of Station One. The owner of the tower, because that is not our tower, apparently had some bad drawings of what equipment was supposed to be on there. And they went up and cut all of our radios off that actually do our wireless ring around the city. That shut down all five fire departments that are remote. Northwest Rec was shut down. All of our wireless locations were dead at that point in time, so no voice and data to our public safety facilities. That's all because they had a bad drawing of what they assumed was abandoned radios on the tower. So those are the issues that can happen without us having control of the tower. So it's more expensive if we own it, but at least we control what we do with it. And, you know, the thought of initially moving the tower back in the day, because AT&amp;T wanting to get up into the area, I would hate to see another tower go in in that particular area because nobody wants another tower in their backyard. So if we had a tower that was actually built for the additional load, we could stay with one tower and still get additional for our revenue from at least based on that.
So, yeah, and I know I've discussed this with you. And if you can provide us with that report from last year, and I just, we'll disregard the numbers that you got because obviously the cost has have gone up. But I do have a concern with building a new tower at, at the expense at six point four million. And then it just evens out. So at this point, I'm not going to speak other than to say, I don't know if it's cost effective at this point. But, and I certainly don't want to give another carrier control of our tower because with safety, again, you've got nine eleven, the dispatchers, you've got the fire, you've got the police. And for, for us to lease it from another carrier and they have control of it is not conducive for serving our community.
Well, Station One is that.
I know, but as he expressed, that he had an issue. And had they not realized that we were without any contact at all? We had no connection for our fire department, for our police. And kind of ran around frantically trying to get them back in, so in service. So no, I don't feel like we should put ourselves in that position again.
Those are, those are certainly three options to look at for putting a new tower up. And, you know, like I say, if it was my, my decision, I would own the tower, but it's not my money.
Your decision, I'm sorry.
I would own the tower.
Oh, no, absolutely.
I would certainly recommend owning it, but
Especially because of who is utilizing that tower. I would never want to lease it to somebody. I would never want someone else to own it and we lease it because that's giving away.
And one thing I do just want to say too, should we, not so much about the tower, but should we choose to sell? My preference is to definitely go to market with it, not, let's do a call for offers.
No, no, right. No, I, that's just one of, just so you know, that's just kind of the numbers that we're talking about.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay. Next up, some, some fire statistics that were brought up at the last, last budget workshop on Monday. As I say, facts are a stubborn thing, they never change. It was said that Squad One was only available thirty-nine percent of the time based on a hundred and eighty-eight fires. And according to our, our records, it was, there were a hundred and ninety-two calls for service. And they said that only seventy-five calls, which equals thirty-nine percent. So I've got a, I can give you out the, matter of fact, here if you'd like. Got some statistics for you to show you that, anyway, the, according to all of our statistics, it comes out that we have seventy-five percent of the time it was covered, Squad One. Now, what, what you've got in here are those couple of things. The, the green and all these sheets are the one, the times that it was not available. The red means that it was not needed. And the yellow, because, you know, Squad One was, was in that accident on March first, then the, the, the yellow means that we had, we sent a different vehicle, but with the same two people on the truck. So I just wanted to show you that, you know, that the numbers that you were given were not
So what's the correct percentage then, I guess?
Seventy-five percent. So
Versus the
Thirty-nine. And then the, the other thing that was brought up that's also factually incorrect, somebody said they were, they were crest, they, they requested an emergency safety meeting. And I had Rob Hippler go back and take a look and there were no such emails. So those two things pretty important. You know, if you're going to make those allegations, you sure ought to have those, you know, some information to back that up. So I just thought you'd want to see, this is the information backing up those, those numbers. And then last, wanted to say, I had a great meeting with Congresswoman Demmings and whole team, along with Homeland Security Secretary Mayorkas. And we talked about a lot of things. One of them FEMA reimbursements. You know, a lot of times when you, when you have a hurricane or whatnot, you, it's years. I mean, literally twenty-four months, thirty-six months before you finally get paid for debris removal and all those things. And so it was kind of unanimous between the mayors that were there, as Mayor Demmings and Mayor Dyer and I, talking about how we got, we could get reimbursed faster. I, I wanted to thank, I thanked them for the four hundred thousand dollars that we got that was, that we're, you know, we're now going to implement that in the new communications system, which will now make us integrated with, within central Florida. So wanted to thank them for that. But also told them, one of the things that we talked about was FEMA. And I said, you know, Florida is a donor state when it comes to FEMA. We, we give, we put more money into the FEMA program than we get out. And that you need to remember Florida, we, we're not asking for more than we, we give, but we need to be at least equal. And so, but it was a great meeting. We spent an hour and a half or so and then had a little, a press conference afterwards. And so it was a, I thought a good meeting that we could kind of air some of those, those thoughts out with the, the Secretary of Homeland Security. So with that,